That's called the January twenty-second City Council Meeting to order. The Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Sorry. So Councilmember Frun is here, Councilmember Mohan.
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent tonight, Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here. So Councilmember Wong. This is a, he originally rescheduled his flight for January twenty-first. And then when we moved the meeting on the seventeenth of December, he somehow didn't recognize that he couldn't make it on a new date. So he is very sorry, but he has made some video comments on certain agenda item. We hope that he'll be able to join us next time. Next, do you have any close session report?
There's nothing to report, Mayor.
Yeah. And then for the ceremonial, I think we don't have any ceremony. For ceremonial items, we have two proclamations. I'd like to, this is a new process that I'm adopting for this year. I would like to recognize organizations or individuals who have made consistent continued contribution to Cupertino. And these two organizations are just someone I have known and then I have, I would like to sincerely thank them for their continued contribution. But for future meetings, I welcome everyone to propose organizations that could be recognized in this format. So in future meeting, likely the first meeting of the month would be awareness of declaration of certain awareness of the month. But the second meeting would be proclamation for organizations. So this is something that others mayors have done in their cities and I think Cupertino has done before, but we haven't done that for the past two years. So that's something I would like to do for this year. Thank you. And the first organization is a proclamation to Taiwanese Culture and Sports Association, recognizing the fifteenth annual Kids Fun Festival scheduled for the 2025 in Cupertino. They have been holding this Kids Fun Festival since 2010 in Cupertino and almost self-funded with very little funding from the city. I think they have a presentation.
Yes, Mayor, I will queue that up.
Oh, by the way, for this kind of proclamation items, and we want to limit the time, so very little comments from the council members. And also no public comment for these proclamation items.
Can you show the presentation?
So you have six minutes.
Yeah.
Video, if you could share my screen, I'm providing the slides. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So good evening, Mayor Chow and the council members. My name is Hong Talin, the president of the TCSA in 2025. So Kids Fun Festival, KFF, began in 2010 as a Happy Kids, Happy Kids Day. So initially, it was in the Cupertino library field. But after the two year, the first two year, then we recognized the need for a larger space. So we relocated this event to the heart of Cupertino, the Memorial Park. So since then, Memorial Park becomes the home of the KFF event. So over the past one more decade, we have hosted, you can see the slide, there are fourteen KFF and twelve of which are in the Cupertino city. So last year, last year in 2024, we are exciting to return to our hometown, the Memorial Park. So and fully enjoy the brand-new, the new design and all the facility. So KFF has a very long history with the city of Cupertino. So we truly appreciate the city's great support, which is a strong foundation in this event's success. Sorry, I quite nervous. Okay, next pages, please. Next page.
Just one moment. Slight delay. Should appear.
Okay. KFF is a full-day family event held on the Saturday in August with a free admission. So it features the four main topics. So on the stage, you can see there is a diverse performance from the various community across the generation. And the international village, there are cultural booths showcase the unique heritage of each community. And over the food court, you can also find the authentic Taiwanese street food and the sound delicious cuisine. And there are about fifteen activities and again in the kids zone, which include like a pony ride, jumping house, and the more booths actually from the sponsor, the society group and nonprofit organization provide something very interesting to the kids and the family. So next page. I think that the KFF is not the celebration for the colorful speech, for the Taiwanese culture. It's embrace the colorful spectrum of the each community cultures. And it also enhance the intercultural connection and the friendship. So as one of the largest the cross-ethnic family festival in the Bay Area, it attracts more than twenty thousand people from the diverse background and also involve more than three hundred dedicated volunteer in this event. Next page slide. So this year, 2025, will be the fifteen-year anniversary, which is a big milestone to us. And it will take place on the Saturday, August twenty-third, at Cupertino Memorial Park, our hometown again. So our goal remain the same, to enhance the cultural awareness and build an international community network. But this time, we will invite even more community join us and then might get the performance team from Taiwan directly. So next page. So how about our organization, TCSA? TCSA stand for Taiwanese Cultural and Sport Association, which is a nonprofit, hundred percent volunteer-run organization, founded by Dr. Hong and Dr. Anita in 2010. We have zero pay employee in the organization. So every volunteer in TCSA is committing their time and energy on this community event. So of course, KFF Kids Fun Festival is the most largest and the most famous event held by TCSA. But start from this year, we host another event, Taiwanese American Culture Festival in May. A performance team actually selected by Taiwanese government will perform and present the roadshow in the west coast cities. San Francisco will be the first cities in this festival and TCSA will serve as a local host to organize this festival in the South Bay area. Next page. So lastly, I think given this longstanding partnership with the city of Cupertino, we are very exciting to continue hosting this annual family event in the city. However, to grow the seat, this event even bigger, we are keeping it accessible and affordable to all the participants. We also need a continued supporting from the city and the city council. And this support, of course, including the, waving the park grant trophy, connecting us with other group and the score, providing advertisement opportunity and join us at the event. I think TCSA will continue devoting our energy and providing the best platform to showcase the beauty and the richness of the Cupertino. So next page. Yeah, I still like to thank you, the city of the Cupertino and the thank you to all the council member for the supporting and celebrating the KFF with us. It won't be success without your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. I often get the request, can the city organize more festivals? But the city really doesn't have the staffing resource to organize any festival. We rely on community organizations, since all the festivals require a lot of volunteer support. So thank you for doing that. And let's have photo with the proclamation. So, thank you. Just, yeah. We think we'll just take a quick photo. Yeah, so this is Dr. Hong who started the festival. And this is the current president. I learned that he is the new generation of president from, it's good to get young people involved. So the next proclamation is to Xin Xin Educational Foundation, recognizing January twenty-ninth, January nineteenth as 2025th Xin Xin Educational Foundation Day. This seems to have been a tradition for Cupertino. Before I even got on the council, I don't know how many years they have declared Xin Xin Educational Day. So let's hear the presentation from Xin Xin.
First of all, good evening. I want to say Happy New Year. As a matter of fact, there's another Happy New Year coming up in a week. So Happy New Year, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, Councilmember Mohan and Councilmember Frun. And I'm really honored to stand here to share some information about the Xin Xin Educational Foundation. I am, my name is Steven Ting. I am actually a very long-time Cupertino resident, about forty years, three generations. And I recently just moved to South San Jose, to a fifty-five-plus community. But my daughter and my grandchildren still live in the old house which I used to live. And I'm, I'm so happy to be, to bring the family grow up in this beautiful town. Actually, I say, I say the most beautiful town in the whole Bay Area. And today, that I'm on behalf of the Xin Xin Educational Foundation, that I am actually chairperson of the foundation. I served the foundation for almost more than twenty years. So today is the day, I just want to say few words about what this foundation does. The foundation actually, as you can tell in front of you on the screen, established in nineteen ninety-seven, so it's almost thirty years now. The numbers are on the, on the projector, on the screen, so I won't go through the details. But I think the last bullet was most important. The foundation actually serves as a platform. It actually bring many like-minded volunteers, individuals, not only the working for the foundation as an all non-paid or volunteer organization, but also working with the local community organizations to work on some of the local service and, and activities. So it's actually the platform, even though I think the foundation has its main objective to provide services to address the educational needs for those kids in the poor and remote region in China. But again, as I said, is after, after all, is a platform. So we are so happy, like the, the many activities we bring the, in the city, that I see not only people from Cupertino come together, but also people from neighboring cities as well. So on the next page, can I see the next page? This page is simply just kind of share with you that over the years, how many rural, remote and poor elementary schools that we've been working to help them to, to bring up their educational quality and the needs. And there are three hundred sixty-five schools. If you recognize China map in terms of the orientation, I just want to say a couple of words on the, that the east side, that's actually connected to the Korean peninsula. The, the provinces around, there are actually many minority nationalities. And those are the kind of situation, and those are the, the needy children we're trying to address their educational needs. So three hundred sixty-five schools, public schools, we're working to try to, to try to address their needs. But actually work not only the normal universities in China, but we actually work with the local universities, like Stanford University, we've been partner with them. Give you one example, Chinese government or education department has a rule, since grade third grade, everybody got to learn English. Very wonderful rule, but where you find English teachers. So we actually work with local school, they, some of them teach the immigrants kids, local here, how to speak English, how to recognize English, how to write English letters. And we actually invite them to go to China to teach English teacher, the train the trainers. And that's what we do. So not only this is talking about, oh, this is the foundation that just address Chinese area, Chinese need. We actually bring to the both countries, people with, again, like-minded individuals together. This is a very important point of view that I just want to share with you. The next page is the fact, we are working with local communities. We are also the volunteers kids, like youth, they actually participating many local activities, service opportunities. Those next few pages, just kind of give an example. Our program, working with the Cupertino library, for instance, the next page, we're gonna, I know the time is running out, so I'm going to go quite fast. Food services, you can all recognize the Second Harvest Food Bank, the city team, those kind of food services, we work, the volunteers youth work on those, those efforts. And the next page. Environmental and ecosystem, that's the, again, use children or youth and work with local organization to address some of the needs over there. So the organization, not only, again, talking about Chinese education in rural country, but we actually bring the kids together to try to give them the opportunity to provide services locally here. The next page. I believe that Thanksgiving, turkey trout, and we do those things too. I mean, talking about youth. Next page. Animal assisted happiness program. I believe this is the last page, if I'm, this is the last page. So those are just a few pages, examples. So when people are thinking about, oh, this is an educational foundation, just to address what needed to rural China elementary school kids. No, we actually bring everybody together. This is the point I'm trying to make. Lastly, that in the, actually just past Sunday, the foundation just held a annual event in Quinnen Community Center. And I, again, I want to represent in the foundation, I want to thank the city. I want to thank the city council members, mayor and vice mayor. Every year, the, the mayor always takes your time to participate in the low, the annual event. And this year, no exception. I want to take, thank Mayor Chow. And she spent time with the foundation's annual event and of, of not only seeing the, the programs, but also see those happy faces and the kids, adults, elders all coming together just last week. So thank you again. I want to take this opportunity to say Happy New Year. And the year of the snake, don't forget. The year of the dragon just going to be gone in a couple more day, a few more days. Thank you again.
Yeah, so I attended their annual event last Sunday and they have the best Chinese New Year performances. So I hope you check it out next year. And I thank you, Dr. Ting. I think you are doing diplomacy for United States. We are the global leader because all the immigrants who come and immigrated here, although we are citizen here, we don't cut the ties with our home country. And we bring technology advances to help other countries, which make US the leader of the world. So thank you for your work, for connecting our youth to the youth in other countries. So I wish we have this kind of program from all kinds of countries and help the rural area in other countries, also in the United States. Let's have the proclamation.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you again. Thank you. So how do it?
I think we just.
Next to you, all right? Thank you. Thank you again.
Sure.
Thank you.
I forgot to ask if any of my fellow council member has any short comments on either of these proclamations. If any council member has short comments on these two proclamations, I forgot to check with you earlier. No, okay, let's proceed. Item four, it's, um, next section is postponements and orders of the day. And the, we had an item that was originally scheduled for this meeting, budget study session for some budget request. So we would like to postpone it to a later time. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moore, second.
Okay, that's vote.
The motion carries unanimously with Wang absent.
Thank you. Oh, I actually have another proposal for the reordering of, of agenda today. I think we have three of the consent agenda has been pulled. Then we have a public hearing for the wait, wait abatement. And then we have the TBD list and then work program study session. Since I think the TBD list is not time-sensitive, so I would like to consider that after the study session. And I think we would address, should I address, should I address the, when, when we consider the consent calendar later?
You could do that now or later.
I can do that now.
Yes.
The three items, I'm not sure if they are time, usually they are, if they are pulled, they are considered after the, all of the action item. But I would like to consider them before the TBD list. So, yeah, okay.
So would you like me to repeat the motion for the benefit of council?
Yes, thank you, please.
So, so I believe what the, the motion proposed by Mayor Chow would be to, to reorder the, the, the work program and TBD list items on the action calendar, to have the TBD list item heard last on the action calendar and then, then separately to move to here, any items pulled from the consent calendar before the TBD list item, but after the work program item.
Yeah.
And Mayor, just to confirm, that's, that is your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so through the mayor, I just want to clarify what I just heard. So we would be, we would go to item ten, then we hit, go to the action calendar, which would begin with item twelve, and then we would go to the consent items and then item eleven. I believe I'm following that correctly?
Yeah.
That is correct, okay. So I, I move that, that proposal? Do I have a second?
Oh, I think I moved that, so you, so you're second.
I'm seconding, okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, thank you, Mayor. When we order, reorder the agenda, does it pose any problems for people who are waiting to speak for an item? And is, is in this case, today's case, will some of that be jeopardized or delayed or inconvenienced for members of the public?
I think.
Or staff?
Yeah, anyone has any, I think usually we are, we are post-delaying an item. So you think some people might want to come in earlier?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Through, through the mayor, I, my impression of, of Councilmember Mohan's point is basically that the major item on today's menu, so to speak, is the, the city work program item. So I'm, I'm sure that that's the one thing that people probably are looking forward to. And I would think that given the degree of overlap that exists between the, it and the TBD list, that they should probably be considered in close proximity to each other. So I, I think we should just keep the agenda the way that it is.
So, yeah, um, I think in the, I think Councilmember Moore, I'm trying to, since we have three items pulled, so I'm not very sure we will get to TBD list. But then there are items pulled from consent that we want to be sure we are able to consider today. That's why I thought that's discuss the consent items first. And the TBD list could be considered in the next meeting. Since it's not, I think, time-sensitive. And maybe part of the items would be already considered as part of work program discussion, which is fine, then maybe that make the. Then maybe that make the, the discussion on TBD list in the next meeting even shorter, which is okay. So, any other comment? No, then let's vote.
I just had a. I just wanted to sort of try our best to get the TBD issue resolved today. I know, as you pointed out, Mayor, it is, there are several items that are in common with the work program. So if we could somehow do both those issues together, then we could whittle down the, the TBD list substantially. And then we won't have to deal with it till the next quarter. And I think the.
The way I see it, some of these items likely will have split vote today. And even if we, we can probably have a resolution and we will be wasting time today. So it may be best to consider it in the next meeting, that would be more efficient. So that's vote then. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yes, as, as an alternative, you could put the TBD list in, as a postponement. Is that something, does our city attorney want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, so the, for, if, yeah, the TBDs could be considered for postponement and it would take a, a majority vote of council to postpone it.
Okay, so should that be two separate motions?
They could be done as, as one motion or two separate motions.
Okay, so then it's a friendly amendment to postpone the TBD to, to the motion. Or do we do that separately?
You could do that separately, but I was just wanting to make sure that that was an option that was still open, if that was ultimately what was.
So that's vote on the current motion, which is simply reordering, put the TBD list last after the items pulled from consent. Let's vote.
Motion carries with Councilmember Fruin voting no and Councilmember Wong absent.
So would you like to make a motion for a postponement?
I'm not sure that that's necessary.
So we will see if we have, yeah, maybe if we have time, we can have some discussion on that. Okay, so next item would be the oral communication. City Clerk, would you please introduce the item?
Yes, Mayor, this, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first come, first served basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may however briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, and just a reminder, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please have your speaker card submitted in the next nine minutes or use the raised hand feature virtually. So Mayor, we have, currently have two requests to speak from Community Hall in addition to a group request. And I currently see five hands requesting to speak virtually. So that's fifteen, twenty-five, about thirty, about thirty minutes.
Yeah, so great. Then we can have the full thirty-three minutes for everyone. And the group request for, of five people would, they would have ten minutes, right?
Yes, so it is a group of five people consolidating their time with a total of two minutes each, so that brings us to ten minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, okay. So first we have, we have Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by David Yan's group and Peggy Griffin. Welcome Shawnee.
The Santa Clara Valley World Alliance, our office is at McLaren Ranch. We've been there for a long time and have been good citizens of Cupertino, I think, offering a lot of programs to residents and others. I wanted to thank staff for the diligence that they have done on the application for the development of Vista Heights up over nearly in the Vista Park. That development on the canyon rim is potentially very dangerous if it ever happens to the city. This has been a discussion item before. And fire, as we know now, is a big issue, especially when you develop near creeks or near the high areas where you're near the canyons. So this is something to be very concerned with and I'm glad that the application was deemed incomplete. But as the, as the application was being processed, the landowner proceeded to create a lot of damage on that property. Putting roads, excavations, trenches, removing a lot of vegetation. And I'm not sure how it can be restored, but it should be restored. I am aware that staff is looking at that and that there, it was supposed to be a retroactive grading application, which I'm not sure whether it has been submitted yet or not. But that's also not enough. There's got to be some real restoration to the damage, a lot of clearing of land, some of it is in creeks. It's just, or tributaries of Stevens Creek. So that's actually, I've, I've been in this field for a long time. I've never seen anyone do something like that, except for a couple of places in the, in the county where the county required restoration and did CQ for the restoration because the damage is so extensive. But meanwhile, it seems like the trail continues to be built after a stop was issued to no more work on the project. And from my, actually pretty extensive experience on planning trails in nature, you have to be very, very careful how you plan them. You have to avoid or be very considerate of the natural environment and you have to make sure that people that walk on that trail eventually are safe. And the city has done a really good job along Stevens Creek. But what's happening up there should be reviewed and potentially stopped. Thank you.
Thank you Shawnee. And next we have the group request to speak, David Yan, Yin Sosak, Marge, Margaret, Taz, Tabrizad, sorry, Tabrizad. Mark Fantasi and Ahmad Yasti and Patrick Sheehy. Sheehy, welcome.
Alright, thank you. We're here to voice our opposition to the rezoning of the Evolish Court property on Linda Vista Drive and the application for the development of Summer Hill. Each of you should have received in your inbox today, this letter, but I've got additional copies here I'd like to hand over to, to you. But we believe the, the city has harmed the residences of Evolish Court in this vicinity because we were not notified adequately of the rezoning process. The Evolish property was not on the original list of properties on the 2022, 2022 notification. It was added after the fact in 2024, a very, very limited notification. None of the residences in the area were notified of the rezoning, which limited our possibility of any intervention. Last year, 750 residences signed a petition in opposition of the rezoning and lack of notification. That petition sort of sat and didn't, and the council didn't take any action on it. But the lack of notification did not allow us to present our concerns in a public hearing. We, we believe the limited notification was deliberate. The city could not, could just as easily have notified us using the original 2022 notification process, which we all were aware of. Because there was, there are significant questions concerning the lack of notification, we think that we were asking that the Summer Hill application be put on hold until an independent investigation be done to look into the, the decision and process by which you came up with this notification decision. A very limited for this, this property. As a result of the rezoning, the city has put our property and neighborhood at significant risk. The city waived the CQ requirements for rezoning as part of the settlement agreement, thereby eliminating a challenge to the rezoning based on the significant impacts to the properties, surrounding area. We, we live in a, in a, near a open space area, there's a high fire risk. The higher density puts the neighborhood at significant risk, as demonstrated by the recent fires in Southern California. Californians are struggling to find home insurance. The planned development will result in a structure substantially taller than the surrounding buildings, increasing the fire danger. For me, my property is right adjacent to it. This development is literally putting a forty-foot-high stack of kindling twenty feet away from my house. The city has taken the above action in response to the Housing Act, SB 330, allowing expedited approvals without regard to impacts of the neighborhood. This project will make homes surrounding the property uninsurable, therefore, thereby reducing property values or worse, making our homes unsellable. My home insurance policy was canceled at renewal because of a high fire risk and it was difficult for me to find replacement insurance. If this happens again, the, the development will make it impossible. It's imperative that city council take this condition under consideration when evaluating this development. The Evolish property was originally Zoned R1, single family with a lot size of 7,500 square feet. That's the risk that the neighborhoods assumed when they bought, bought the property here. This infrastructure, the infrastructure on our neighborhood was built over sixty years ago, designed to support eleven houses on this property. The proposed development will have five times the demand on services than the age system was designed for. In addition, the development will increase the impervious surface area by 65%, increasing the flood potential. Because the planning department has not demonstrated its willingness to protect the property rights of the residences, we cannot expect the planning department to look out for our interests in reviewing the proposed development application. Therefore, we are, we require the following. A full and complete environmental impact report that will also include the following analyses. A full and complete drainage study covering at least thirty-five acres surrounding the property to validate the drainage capacity of the system with the increase in impervious surface area. Fire-water flow analysis using actual flow test data results from the fire hydrants on Linda Vista Drive from Hyannis Port up to and including Linda Vista Park. The flow analysis will include the entire San Jose water system influenced by the fire demand up to and including the pump stations at San Jose Water. The analysis will also include a resiliency study for standby power and provide a reliability for seismically induced pipe strains for the ground motions up to eight-point-oh magnitude earthquake. A domestic water analysis for peak demands. A site-specific ground motion in accordance with AAC seven dash two. Recent studies indicate fault activity in California is accelerating. The property is about four miles away from the San Andreas Fault. The uniform California earthquake rupture forecast estimates a greater than 99% chance of one or more magnitude six-point-seven or larger earthquakes striking California. A sanitary sewer flow will be done to include all flows to the main trunk line. A traffic study to include time of day analysis and not just level of service. Egress analysis considering evacuation due to an earthquake or fire. And all of these studies will be subject to review by our independent experts and residences. Furthermore, because of the, the situation of fire insurance, Summer Hill shall provide to residents within a 900-foot radius, radius of the, of the Evolish property, regardless of what reaches that, that 90-foot radius, they will provide fire insurance at an annual premium of $900 for 10 years. This, this is necessary to ensure that we have the ability to insure our homes and ensure the sellability of our house. Respectfully, Mark Fantasi. Anyone else want to add anything? We got three minutes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mark and group. Next we have Peggy Griffin. And then we will move to those requests of you speak remotely. Welcome Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. I'm here to express my frustration and concern about document security and accessibility. This last agenda included a combination of PDF documents and Word documents. And I know from personal experiences that Word is not a good transfer medium. The person receiving it, it depends on their version of Word, their templates, whatever. What you think you're sending and what they receive are two different things or can be. Also, if you're on a mobile phone or a tablet, you may not have Word. Whereas the PDF, PDF readers are on browsers, they're, it's the de facto standard. I've heard that some members of the city don't think that this is a big issue, but it is. The workaround is to download the entire agenda packet. If you're on a mobile phone and all you care about is item one, to have to download all that and take up all your bits when you're traveling is not acceptable. Please make this a priority and fix this. Thank you.
Thank you Peggy. And now we will move to those requesting to speak virtually.
Through the mayor. If the city manager could comment on the issue at hand?
Of course. Councilmember Fruin, so we apologize for the, the confusion. So this is a problem that has caused by our vendor, Granicus. In fact, many jurisdictions have experienced the same challenges. We realize that this is causing a lot of trouble to the, to the residents. We apologize again, this is completely out of our control. We've been working diligently with the vendor, Granicus, to resolve this. We're hopeful that by the next council meeting, if not in a month or so, that we can come to a plausible solution. Again, I, I don't want to punt it back to the consultant, but we're not the only one. Many other jurisdictions are also experiencing the same difficulty with this vendor. Thank you, Councilmember Fruin.
So we have Team Active Circle Sneha, followed by San Ar, followed by Nori, Rotafrye and Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Team Active Circle Sneha. And you will need to unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi, this is Sneha. Hey, thank you. Hi, we wanted to present about the Active Circle. Would we have this council meeting next week also?
The next city council meeting will be on February 4th, Tuesday.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Can we just quickly present? I have my daughter over here, she is Nivriti Veera. And she wanted to talk about Active Circle. Yeah, go ahead, please, Nivriti. She's a teenager from Cupertino High School.
So Active Circle is my 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And our mission is creating active connected communities. Basically, we do a bunch of different types of group events and fundraisers. Like, we've been doing neurodiverse, all-inclusive picnics for the neurodiverse community around Cupertino, Santa Clara and Sunnyvale. We do a lot of hiking, walkathons, challenges, health challenges, webinars for professionals from like lifestyle coaches, mental health professionals. And we recently filed out the grant application because we raised a lot of funds to donate to different charities and different nonprofits. In the last year, we donated about $10,000 total. We're doing a lot of work for kids with cancer. We're doing fundraisers for them too. And then also just like for our neurodiverse picnics, we use the funding to do different types of activities. We also are working or have been doing sneaker donation drives. So in the last year, at the very end of 2024, we held a two-month sneaker donation drive where we collected sneakers from a bunch of different people. We like read it, we did it, we partnered with a lot of organizations, and we successfully donated almost over 200 sneakers. And so we were just looking for ways to partner with Cupertino City and for funding from Cupertino City. We would love to do like health events with Cupertino. We've partnered with the Cupertino City for biking, for the Bike Fest in the past. And we've done some health events too. Thank you.
And yeah, we worked with Mayor Sheila Mohan knows, I mean, has, we've met her, and we also were present at the current coffee last Monday, this Monday. So yeah, we just wanted to present ourselves. Yeah, and this organization is run by two teenager girls. They started it in 2020 during the COVID. Nivriti is a student at Cupertino High School.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Nori, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Brooke Ezit. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Chow. Thank you for the time. I would like to request the city council to please prioritize funding the July 4th holiday celebrations. I inquired with Fox Director Senator, and it sounds like the evening celebrations have not been funded, and that has not explicitly been itemized on the agenda as its own item yet. And I'm alarmed that, you know, we are into Jan already and there's no discussion of that item. So please prioritize funding for the July 4th evening celebrations at Kriksite Park and the other locations. Please also prioritize funding the Blackberry Farm festivities. When we inquired about this last year, we were told that it was overcrowded. If it is overcrowded, there's a simple solution. Please limit it to residents only. We've seen a number of Fox and Rec events, such as the Halloween events and the holiday events, that have been flooded by out-of-towners, and residents could not get in. And I request you to please have Fox and Rec assess historical demand and based on demand to limit the event to residents only, or have a fixed count and not open registration for nonresidents until maybe a few hours before the actual event. So please prioritize residents. Please do not use overcrowding as a reason to not have these events. The second thing I want to bring up is please prioritize inter-agency engagement for the council. The city has significantly greater change in scenarios and priorities compared to the last council meeting, given the unimaginable situation in LA. And as you know, we have vast open expansive land. On the west side of Cupertino, we are surrounded by the quarry and the hills. And it is critical that council and staff prioritize inter-agency communication. I have asked previously if there's water in our hydrants, if we have done a hydrant test. When was the last time we did an audit of our fire trucks and our fire stations? And I still don't have clear answers on these. And I have been punted around between San Jose Water, Valley Water, Fire District, the council, and the county. And so I request you to please prioritize, take the initiative. Cupertino residents, demands of you, to please focus on fire readiness and emergency preparedness. And finally, I want to say the number of homeless encampments have been increasing. We now seem to have at least three in the heart of the city, one behind Target on Elvis Drive, one at Stevens Creek in Deans, and one in Deans and McClellan. And I don't understand why this is happening when Newsom has passed an executive order allowing cities to enforce their ordinances. And there's a Supreme Court ruling that allows this as well. So please have public work staff or the Sheriff's Department or U.C., whatever the case may be, to clear these encampments. And, you know, we're looking for change in action from these new council members that have voted in. And as of now, we've seen no action. It's been over two months. So please treat these things with urgency and priority. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Nori, followed by Brooke, Rhoda Frye, followed by Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Nori.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Solar system is a great concept, using a solar panel to convert sunlight into electricity that save energy over time. I'm not against the solar system. I'm against about this locations. Memorial Park parking lot on August. 20 tall healthy redwood trees are blocking the sunlight. It might impact to remove those trees in order to get the sufficient sunlight. The photo was used for presentation last month, must have been taken in midsummer. After building a solar panel at the parking lot, it's a lot darker, blocking the nice view of the trees and green field. New young trees are recently planted along the parking lot. Mine needs to be removed. Picnic area. Building a solar panel at the picnic area looks awful. The picnic area gets dark, not cheerful, no longer a fun gathering place. If shading is needed, city can build a large cloth or a polycarbonate canopy that does not cost too much. I am asking you to build the solar panel on Quinlan Center and senior center roof that gets a lot of sunlight all day and all year round. CIP mentioned that the tile needs to be moved in order to install the solar panel on the roof. Removing a tile is just temporary and locally in order to install the small bracket that mount the narrow rail to support the solar panel. Those remove the tile, place back after bracket were installed. I am not professional, but it sounds easier, easy process. On the other hand, installing a metal tall column on the concrete ground and the heavy steel beam need to support the solar panel in the parking lot sounds a major construction down the Quinlan Center roof. The parking lot area needs to be closed during the construction. Memorial Park is the biggest park in Cupertino. Many people visiting for festival and concert. So it should be look nice with many trees and nice field so that people can enjoy. Please do not destroy green nature, beautiful Memorial Park. Please preserve the nature. Please build a solar panel on the Quinlan Center and the senior center roof. Please support. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Nori. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Rhoda.
Ah, there we go. Hi, good evening. I have a grab bag of issues as usual. I'd like to echo the comments that Mark made and especially Shawnee Kleinhaus as well. I sent you a late message this evening. And back in 2019, I came to the council asking about, let's improve our fire safety. And in fact, we had a plan that had been developed in 2016 that also looked at our, it looked at fire safety and also our wildland interface, urban interface areas, which is referred to as WUWE. And, you know, it didn't get implemented fully. And that's bad because, you know, we are taxpayers. We've invested in the plan, and we need to implement the plan and potentially improve the plan. You know, we had, we had the staffing to go from home to home to look at the fencing of what residents wanted along the Riggar Creek Trail, along the McClellan-Linda Vista Trail. Now we need to go out, really direct outreach those residents, those few residents that include the map, who are in the WUWE zone. We need to protect our residents. We need to protect our, yeah, anyway. So enough on fire. Echoing Shawnee's comments, we do need to have an EIR to restore the environmental damage allegedly made without permission adjusted to Linda Vista Park. Additionally, per what Mark said earlier, we do need full EIRs for both the proposed housing element projects at McClellan Road and Linda Vista Drive. You know, we've got fire safety issues. We've got egress issues. These are things that we really need to, we need to be looking at. And finally, and I also have emailed this to you as well. You know, we have a number of projects, this is regarding the budget. Well, you know, we've got a number of projects had funding allocated and, and, you know, when it appears that we had unlimited funds. We no longer have unlimited funds, and our sales tax revenue is dropping from about $27 million annually to about $9 million annually. We will not be able to close the gap. We need to retain the money that we have, we have, and use the, it's interest earnings. We can't dip into our savings. I'm dismayed that plans, plans have included dipping into our savings over the next 10 years. What happens in year 11? You know, by then, our city staff might have moved on to other jobs or even retired, but the residents will still be here. We need to make that money last. Please, let's look at scaling back previously funding, funded, funded, funding. Excuse me, I'm on today, funded projects. Thank you very, very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Rhoda. And our final speaker that had their hand raised before the cutoff is Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Brooke.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I sort of wanted to piggyback on what some of the previous speakers said, particularly Rhoda Frye and San Ar, about fire safety. I wasn't aware that there was a plan that we had, but considering that we nearly dodged, we dodged a bullet a couple of years ago with the flames almost coming up to the top of the mountains over there in Santa Cruz, we really need to get our act together because I'm sure the people in Pacific Palisades didn't think that their city was going to turn into an inferno. If there is a plan out there, we need to, we need to build on it. We need to have defensible areas, and we need to have fire retardant materials in our buildings. Secondly, the funding issue. I really don't know what the state of the city's funding is. We got mixed messages from the last city council. We need to know where we stand because we can't plan for tomorrow if we don't know what we have today. We need to have multiple streams of income. We can't simply limit ourselves to developers' fees. Those are transactional money. And we need to have, we need to have economic development. We need to have a whole array of other issues, of other ways to bring in income. And then, you know, we can bank on the staff's expertise to find ways to cut corners because they do their jobs every day and they know where the money is going. And finally, with the BMR funds, what is the city going to do to replenish that? Some of those funds were taken and they were used, I believe, inappropriately for things like magazine subscriptions. And we need to get that money back because we need to help people. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Mayor, that concludes, that was the final speaker requesting for this item.
Thank you. I normally save my simple question till the end. So if anyone, does anyone have some simple question for the staff? Okay, so for the question from Shawnee about the damages done to Vista Heights Trail and some trenches, would restoration be needed? Is there a short response from staff? This has been brought up, I think, since December.
What kind of shortest response, Mayor?
With, with, is the city working on restoration permit or retroactive permit for them to restore the trenches that's already docked on the property without permit?
Staff is working with the property owner on a grading violation. And to minimize that grading violation, we're working with remediation of that work.
So they would restore the...
We're working on a remediation.
Are they, are there continuing work being done there?
Continuing the illegal work?
Not supposed to continue digging a trail?
That's true. So we issued a violation notice to the property owner.
Thank you for confirming that. And regarding inter-agency communication, please continue to send in your questions. Someone's sending a concern about water level in the reservoir. We forwarded that to the Water District, and they have provided a really detailed answer. The 60% capacity is the normal capacity. I have submitted their answer in the written communication. So if you send in your questions, we will try to get answer from other agency. And I believe the Fire Department is compiling an FAQ for a lot of questions that people have. So if you have, send them so we can pass them along. Yeah, thank you. So next, it's a consent agenda. We have pulled, I believe, items seven, eight, and nine have been pulled. May I have a motion to approve five and six?
More so moved?
Excuse me, Mayor? Do we want to, do you want to ask for public comment before there's a vote?
Thank you for the reminder. Any public comment on item five and six?
Mayor, I currently have no requests for those two items. I currently see no requests for those two items.
Thank you. So, motion?
So I move that we approve consent items five and six.
Second?
Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Okay. So next, we would go into public hearing. Item 10, public hearing on the abatement of public nonsense from weeds and other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 9.08 and Resolution Number 24-111.
Yes, Mayor, I have, I have a brief presentation. I will share my screen. Okay. So the weed abatement program is in place to prevent fire hazards posed by vegetative growth and combustible materials. It's managed by the Santa Clara County Department of Agriculture. And the Cupertino Municipal Code, Section 9.08, requires property owners to remove or destroy weeds on their properties. Compliance is required annually by April 30, but parcel owners are expected to maintain their properties year-round. So the way that a property is added to the program is if they're found to be noncompliant with the minimum fire safety standards. Usually, it's discovered by either a complaint or the, one of the inspectors happens to assess a property passing to and from inspections. So once a property is added, it remains on the list in the program for a period of three years. And they are removed from the program once they are found to be hazard-free, uninterrupted during that three-year time period. On December 3rd, 2024, the council adopted Resolution 24-111, accepting a report that was submitted by the county enumerating the noncompliant properties in the city. So the minimum fire safety standards, I've summarized them here. Those are the owner responsibilities that they must maintain on their properties. The vegetation height must not exceed six inches. This includes around roadways and driveways. Vegetation should be cleared from 30 feet from structures. Combustible debris should be cleared. The eaves, under the eaves of houses should be cleared, including roofs and gutters. And tree branches should be trimmed 10 feet from chimneys. So I have an example of, at the top, a noncompliant property. You see that the grass is above six inches all around the front, and then it goes into the driveway as well. And then the photo below is a compliant property that's been cleared. Also, this clearly has debris off to the right, including dry branches and trunks. And the tree's overgrown and the grass is well above six inches. And then the compliant property below has been completely cleared of all of those hazards. So a homeowner, once they're notified that they need to abate their property, they have a couple of options. They can complete the work on their own. If they do not complete the work by the stated deadline, which is April 30, then the county is authorized, well, we're asking for council authorization tonight. The county would be authorized to assign a contractor to complete the work. And those charges would be appearing on the next property tax bill. Now, a homeowner also has the option to contact one of the, they approved county contractors to complete the work. But if they fail to abate the property by the deadline, then the county will go ahead and assign that work. And then the homeowner will be charged an administrative fee plus the, all of the cost of abatement. And the inspections begin after April 30. Every program in the, every parcel in the program receives an initial inspection fee. This fire, this season, it is $105. That covers the cost of the county servicing the property. That is in addition to any administrative charges for penalties of non-compliance. And the county sent a notice of the, tonight's hearing and the requirements of abatement on December 20th to everyone in the program. And the city clerk's office also sent a reminder notice with the same information on January 10. And so tonight's action before you is to conduct the hearing for property owners that are on the list and wish to contest the matter of proposed abatement on their parcels. And then also, staff is recommending council adopt Resolution Number 25-006, ordering abatement of public nuisance from weeds and other fire hazards, which essentially allows the county to go and abate these properties if it's not completed by the April 30 deadline. And this is pursuant to the Municipal Code, Chapter 9.08, and the resolution that council adopted in 20, in December 2024, with those properties enumerated on the list. And that concludes my presentation. We also have, from the county, Mo Cumry retired, our weed abatement program manager. And we have a new weed abatement program manager who's been patiently waiting, Garrick. I will see if I can say his name properly. Io Salewski is here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the before and after picture. Those are helpful. Thank you, Eric, for attending the meeting. Sure. So we open to public comment?
Yes. Well, council may ask questions and then if you wish, if they wish, and then we can open the public hearing. Mayor, you would open the public hearing. And then we do have a couple of requests to speak on this item from parcel owners.
Okay, first, council member question? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have Hammett Manuson and David Guy. I see no hands raised virtually requesting to speak. So Ham, Hammett, would you like to join us at the podium? Thank you. Anyone requesting to speak on this matter, please have your request to speak in the next nine minutes.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to speak. So my house was placed on this weed abatement about two years ago when I was overseas because of death of my dad. And at that time, the property did get neglected and I was placed on this notice. Since then, we have been maintaining it well and we would request that we should be removed from this compliance program. Thank you.
So would Eric, you like to comment?
You'll need to switch it on, right by the white stripe. Yes.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Garrick Io Salewski, County of Santa Clara, Weed Abatement Program. I'd be happy to look into the property information if you can give me either your address or parcel number.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, let's have the next speaker, then you can...
We can maybe confer after the hearing.
If you need to speak, you can come.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Guy, followed by, I believe it's Roger Costa, followed by Alan Nguyen. Welcome, David.
Thank you, thank you for a moment to speak. We were placed on the abatement program a year ago. We received the, the notice, I brought our copy this year. It was not clear to us at the time that we need to attend this meeting in order to be removed from the list. We submitted the appropriate documentation stating that we would manage the, the issue. We've since managed it. We came to the meeting about six months ago. I spoke with Mo at that time. He asked that I return to this meeting to readdress our request to be removed.
Okay, so did you give your address to Garrett?
Uh, no, it's 10399 South Tantao.
So let me ask, and my understanding is once you are put on the program, it will be, this county will monitor it for three years. Is that correct?
Yes, a property can come off of the list if they show three consecutive years of compliance. So if our inspector goes out to visit the property, three years in a row, and they pass the inspection, then they automatically get removed. If, say, they comply for two years in a row and then the third year they fail to comply, then that three-year period starts over again.
So if they are compliant for only two years, they need to show another year of compliance?
That is typically how we operate.
Then in the meantime, they still need to pay the $105 inspection fee?
That's correct. Every year, there's an inspection fee for the inspection.
But they will need to pay the fee to, for the contractor to complete the cleanup?
If they are found to be out of compliance and we give them a period of time to complete the abatement work, if they don't complete it by that time, then our contractor can do the work.
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mike Campbell, followed by, I'm sorry. Actually, Roger Costas was, was first, then Alan Nguyen, then Mike Campbell. Welcome, Roger.
Hello. And I had Bobby Pangborn on the top of the card to follow me, so. Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Roger Costa. I'm a long-term Cupertino resident who lives in the Rancho Deep Cliff Homeowners Association. I serve on the Board of Directors of that HOA. We are a community of 61 homes on approximately 18 acres of land nestled into the Cupertino foothills, very near Linda Vista Park, Stevens Creek Park, and the Fremont Older Open Space Preserve. And because of our proximity to these wildlife areas, our owners and the HOA itself find it very challenging to acquire hazard insurance. So tonight, I'm asking you to think more broadly. And I'm urging you to ask the city and the county entities that are responsible to engage in proactive weed abatement and to mitigate fire hazards on public lands, not just private lands. Our community is adjacent to a very large privately-held parcel of land, which is immediately between us and Stevens Creek Park. The private property owner has been incredibly responsible. This past year, they did weed abatement three distinct times. They have also removed brush and removed highly-flammable eucalyptus limbs and trees from their property to mitigate fire risk. In contrast, Stevens Creek Park, immediately adjacent to this private property and separated only by a chain-linked fence, had chest-high weeds throughout the year, volatile dead brush, broken tree limbs all along the perimeter of the park. It seemed that the only weed abatement in the park was done around picnic areas and near restrooms. During the summer, I wrote on behalf of our association to the Director of the Parks Department, asking for improved fire hazard mitigation. And I engaged in a series of polite, but largely unresponsive interchanges with a staff member that left me with the two following observations. One, weed abatement regulations apply only to privately-owned lands. Public lands seem to be omitted. Secondly, the county fire hazard abatement measures on public land only need occur within 100 feet of public or nearby private structures.
That is your time? Thank you.
May I ask you again to please think more broadly?
Sorry, that is your time? Thank you. And next, I see that you do have Bobby Paragon?
If you want to sit, your time, oh.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Also, Vice Mayor and Councilpersons. I'm president of the Rancho Deep Cliff HOA. It's a beautiful community. We love it the way it looks. We spend a lot of money in our budget annually to keep our trees pruned and thinned. We also pay attention to our bushes around the homes. We have annual visits by the Santa Clara County Fire District representative, who verifies that our efforts are satisfactory. So we are very conscientious because we realize, as you have probably understood from Roger's presentation, we realize that we love where we live because we are considered or deemed to be in a rural, urban interface community. However, it does bring its risks. And we're very conscientious. We owe it to our owners to do our best to keep that attended to. Likewise, when Roger reported to our board, the response he received from the county office about their responsibility for that area that we are adjacent to, it doesn't give us much comfort in understanding that we can be held to a standard that is not also expected by our officials. So we're very surprised, disappointed, and we ask, we understand this is not just a county situation or issue. If the county park goes up, we go up. And that, we are Cupertino citizens and we love being so. We thank you for your support. We thank you for pursuing this with the county, that they have a standard as well. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. And next, we have Alan Nguyen, followed by Mike Campbell. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Alan Nguyen. I am the property owner at 10605 Johansson Drive, Cupertino. I have been a Cupertino resident for over 30 years and I do agree with the program in terms of removing weeds and so on. The only issue I had is, I think last year was the first year when I got the notice and I missed the chance to speak at the time about this program and when I, my property was put on the abatement program. Anyway, I talked to Mo. He said I should come this year and I did get the letter, so. The concern I have is this. If last year was the first year, I didn't get enough information in terms of, what I heard today, like something that put on the program will stay there for three years. I only learned that when I called or talked to Mo and his team. And then also, I didn't get any information as far as how bad it was for me. Then I talked to his team and sent me a picture, only one picture on record. And it was an area of six by 10 and a little bit of weed. So it's a very, our, our property is on a cul-de-sac and it's very small, narrow frontage. So I was a little bit surprised by that. Anyway, he said, it's too late, so I should come and talk to you. I do have pictures and this is today what it is like, you know, it's really no weed. I mean, the other issue I have is I ran it out to a tenant and they have small children. And I have a gardener for 15 years for the property and he's been doing it, really good job. But he didn't, couldn't do, spray the weed because the tenant said, I have small children, I do not allow you to spray. So ended up, you know, we tried to do our best. So that's the problem I have. This may be my own personal problem, but it's a dynamic I have. So that's why I wanted to discuss and hopefully I can be removed from the list. A point for the discussion. Thank you.
Would you like me to review these as they come up? Or would you like me to address them outside the chamber afterwards and then get back to you?
Through the mayor. What I think has been successful in the past is the second option that was just offered.
So we can take a break while Garrett reviews this application?
Correct. That seemed to work very well for Mo in the past and I don't see a reason why it wouldn't work well today.
And I think for the case where it's only a small area that might be out of compliance, I do want to consider if we could not put the property on the list because of a small area, then maybe they can adjust it. So, so after you review these, we could still have that option? Okay. So then that's here all the comment and then we take a break. And then we can reconvene, see what Garrett's recommendation, yeah.
Okay, we have Mike Campbell. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. So my property is at 18781 Tugold Fugigile Avenue. So in a prior year, I ended up getting, getting put on the weed abatement thing.
Please speak to the microphone.
I had a temporary disability from surgery.
You can raise the mic higher, closer, yeah.
So I ended up being non-compliant. At the time, it was reported or inspected. So I took photos today of the property. And you, I don't know if you can see him. If you see.
Put it on the, on the projector.
Show it on... Oh, right here.
Projector, yeah.
Is that?
Just, put, just leave it on there. The video team will zoom in.
Got some other things in. So this is from a different device.
So you are saying this is after your own cleanup? You are saying this is after you have cleaned up the...
Yeah, it's been cleaned up for some time. It's the grass and small bushes, trees cut back. So the, I couldn't find the address on the latest list of non-compliant properties. So I had been non-compliant in a recent year, like two years back. So I, it, it's not on the list of properties here, but I got the notice.
Oh.
So I, I don't know what the status.
Okay, so Garrick will check, check, yeah.
I do see that the property is in our database and is listed as an active parcel for 2025. I do see that the property is in our database and is listed as an active parcel for 2025. So I do not know why it's not on the list. Mo put those lists together before he retired, and I can look into it and determine if it still needs to be on the list.
Okay.
So there will be an inspection, say, April 30th?
I'll have to look into maybe why it's not on the list, but based on my records, it should be still on the list.
So this is his second year or third year?
This property has been on the program for, since at least 2020. In 2020, they failed the inspection. 2021, they passed. 2022, they passed. Then they failed in 2023, and they passed in 2024.
Okay, so if you pass this year and next year, then you are off the program?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's take a break. How much time you think we might need?
Was that all the comments?
Yeah.
Maybe 10 minutes should be enough?
10 minutes. Okay, great. Thank you. That's recommend. So are we keeping the public hearing open in case we need?
I would keep the public hearing open to allow Garrett to report on his conversations.
Okay, public hearing is still open, and we'll take a 10-minute break. So now it's 8:17, so 8:27. Let's do 8:30. We'll come back 8:30. Yeah. 27, 10 minutes is 8:27, right? So it's 30 minutes, yeah. Okay. It's almost 8:30. I think everyone is back in. Okay, now it's 8:30. Let's reconvene. Hi Garrett, thank you for being here.
Of course. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the residents outside. For the first property, which is APN number 37507042, we discussed that we will keep him on the list for now. He has done some construction at the property, and if we can verify that there's enough building and landscaping that's been placed now to prevent the hazard from reoccurring, then we will remove him from the list ourselves. That is another way that somebody can come off of the list, is if they sufficiently build their landscape on their property. So we'll send an inspector out to verify, and we'll remove him from the list if we feel it's appropriate. For the property, which was at address 10399 South Tantow, we recommend to remove them from the list. They now have a plan for the maintenance, where they have a gardener coming out every two weeks to maintain the property. And so I feel comfortable with removing that one from the list at this time. For the property located at 10605 Johansson Drive, we're comfortable also removing that one from the list right now because they also have a gardener that's maintaining it, and so we feel comfortable with their plan moving forward to maintain that property. And for the last person at 18781 Tuggle Avenue, due to the history of repeated compliance and noncompliance and them being on the program for a number of years, I do not recommend removing them from the property now until they can demonstrate three consecutive years of compliance. That was it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have one quick question for you. Were there any properties that were identified that needed to be added to the list based on your conversations with the homeowners who spoke?
No, at this time, no recommendations for any new additions.
Okay, thank you.
Any comment questions? So it looks like we, oh, regarding the property that's supposed to be on, but it's not on the list that's on the agenda, is that on the?
That was the last one on Tuggle Avenue, and it was discovered that they are actually on the list.
So they are on the list that's on the agenda. Okay. So we can approve the list that's on the agenda minus 10399 South Tantow and 10605 Johansson?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll just make that motion.
Second, more?
Let's vote.
The motion as amended carries unanimously with Wong absent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is item number 11. Oh, the TBD list is moved to the end of the agenda, item 11. So next agenda item will be item 12. That's the fiscal year 2025 to 2027 city work program study session. Do we have a staff report, presentation?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Tina Kapoor will have a presentation up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Tina Kapoor, Deputy City Manager. And joining me here in a second is Astrid Robles, Senior Management Analyst. And tonight, we're here to talk about the council prioritization and city work program for fiscal year 2025-27. We have begun the process a few months ago, where we laid out the approach for how we're going to go about the prioritization process through info memos. All are attached again with the agenda packet tonight, and today is just one of the steps in that process. This is an opportunity for council to take a look at and get to know each other's initial priority lists or initial priority projects, and have a conversation about these among yourselves and get feedback from members of our community in preparation for the council priority and goal-setting workshop. And the three recommended actions for you tonight are listed in front of you. Again, to review each other's top projects, a total of 48 projects, which are listed as attachments seen in your packet tonight. Receive a verbal overview of the prioritization process to finalize the city work program and the workshop. And we actually have two options for you to pick from tonight. I will go over it in a second. And then finally, confirm the date for the workshop. So we've laid out the discussion outline for tonight, and this is the order for how we're going to go. So let's start with what is the city work program? So city work program is basically a way in which council determines the relative importance of projects as it relates to your objectives. So this is important because, you know, there are limited resources, time, and effort that can be allocated effectively. The city work program process is also an opportunity for council to provide clear direction to staff on priorities for the upcoming two years. The process involves a strategic planning session, or what we call the council priority and goal-setting workshop, where council members discuss the community needs, evaluate potential projects, and determine the most impactful priorities. Once these priorities are set, council provides direction to city staff on which projects to prioritize and to allocate resource towards. And when the resources are being considered, it is important to acknowledge that we are talking about limited resources, both in terms of staff and budget. I also want to highlight that the city work program, or CWP, is not the CIP. CIP is the list, of course, as you know, for very large and often long-term infrastructure projects that come to council separately. And then as council identifies the priorities, some context can be helpful. As this pyramid here indicates, council priorities are at the very top. However, the foundation of what staff does is focusing on day-to-day operations, which take up majority of time and resources. And if you prefer pie charts over pyramids, this one adds a little bit more detail with percentages, but same concept, that majority of staff's time is tied up in daily operations, leaving roughly 10% for work program items. We do recognize that these, even though council priorities are just a sliver of our overall focus, it is of utmost importance to staff. And this is why we want to make sure that we are successful in creating a city work program that's achievable and that we can all be proud of. So let's briefly talk about what a successful city work program looks like. Most, if not all, local agencies like Cupertino, we face the dilemma of too many priorities chasing too few resources. And so having these strategic planning discussions is considered best practice in determining which council and community priorities warrant the city's limited resources. And here in front of you is the secret sauce of a successful outcome as we go through this exercise. Of course, keeping the focus on only the top priorities that aren't outsized given available resources, understanding that there are limited resources to work with, coming to a consensus on process in terms of how the list will be prioritized, and making sure the priorities are being implemented and that there's progress that we can report on. Speaking of successful city work program, I also want to briefly touch upon the last two-year process that council and staff implemented. So two years ago, through the prioritization exercise, we had a list of 20 projects for staff to focus on. These were council's top priorities for two years. There was a clear understanding of the limited organizational capacity. We stayed on track with the adopted work program, and a lot of credit here goes to council for having that discipline, even when other items that were important came up during the two-year process. These were not added to the agreed-upon work program. And for example, to complement the work program process, the TBD list was created, which is reviewed quarterly, and staff or council can reserve items to be considered for future work program based on scale. We also had staff's commitment. So Pamela often brings up the city work program items at her check-ins with the department heads. We have added a component in staff reports to identify which items are city work program projects as they go to council to give them more visibility and importance. Some of these projects are ongoing, as we're still in the middle of the two years. The work program dashboard is updated regularly and should have most recent status of each of these projects. And we're now in the process of creating the work program for the next two years. And as we prepare for the upcoming prioritization workshop for tonight's discussion, based on council direction on the December 17 council meeting, each council member submitted their top projects to staff. This is the initial list, and I want to emphasize that this is not the final work program list. After we received the top lists from all of you, we added preliminary estimates to these items. Again, these are preliminary, and staff will have more refined estimates ready at the workshop when we know what the list looks like. Also included is the existing city work program items. These are items that were added to the TBD list for future work program consideration, and also staff-proposed items. I'm going to ask Astrid to skip through the next few slides. These are just basically the items that are listed that we received from council members. These are also part of the agenda packet. And I'll pause there for a second. So council was also asked to identify any items that they wish to remove from the existing work program, either from the TBD list or the staff-proposed list. And this is in front of you here. And as indicated in the staff report, this graph, this legend is the graph that we used to show the preliminary estimates for what each item might look like. The human figures indicate staff hours, and the dollar signs indicate budget. The more signs, the more resource that project will require. Again, I want to emphasize that these estimates are preliminary and may change once staff has more time to take a deeper dive into what the project might look like and as we get more clarity. I do want to highlight a couple of examples here. So these are projects from council members' initial lists that we received. For example, the first one looks like it could be a large item, but our estimate shows small. And this is because the project scope asks for options to be determined, and some of this work has already been undertaken, so it won't be a heavy lift. And this is limited scope. In compares, and the second item is a large item, which will require considerable staffing resources. So this is important to keep in mind when we're selecting projects for consideration for the final adoption. And going back to what we were talking about earlier, a successful work program should be achievable. And I will just add that if all of the final projects on the work program list are large, then even though the total number on that list might be small, it is still not feasible as items may not be completed. Another thing to keep in mind is how are the projects distributed among city departments? So this here in front of you, this chart, shows a breakdown of the initial list that we have right now, broken down by department. So as you can see, right now, the bulk of the projects fall between two to three departments. So something to consider as you refine your list and come up with your top priorities. Also, as part of the prioritization exercise, council's gathering feedback from the community. You'll hear from the members of the community tonight, hopefully also some of the commissioners. Maybe you already have received some feedback from them already. In addition, council also has this community survey results to look at while revisiting the council-adopted goals at the workshop. The results are up on our website now, and they were also added as supplemental to this item. We won't go into detail tonight about these results. However, I wanted to point out that the results do indicate that Cupertino residents continue to have a very positive perception about living in the city, as you can see. And now I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about the process for the final adoption of the work program. So there are a few things that happened before and during the workshop. So after tonight and before the workshop, council members will have an opportunity to revise the list and send it to staff by February 14th. Again, this is assuming that the workshop will take place on March 1st. Basically, that gives staff two weeks to come up with the estimates and prepare. We will refine, staff will refine estimates needed based on the revised list. And then during the workshop, council members will rank and finalize the city work program list. Again, please keep in mind the small versus large, as we were just discussing, as you're looking to refine your list, to make sure we have a manageable list at the end. I also want to point out these five projects, next slide, please. And I pulled these, one of them from each of the council's initial lists. All of these are considered small or medium projects that would be manageable but could make a big impact. One of the recommendations for tonight is for council to receive a verbal overview of the ranking process for the workshop. Here in front of you, we've listed two options for you to consider tonight. These are similar to the process we did two years ago, and let me walk you through these briefly. Option one, as you can see, is council members will, you know, ask each other questions, have a conversation, listen from the community, and go back and refine your list, and then send us your top five projects before the workshop. And then staff will go back, will refine these estimates, and bring those back to the workshop. And then council will then consider and finalize the list. Option two is council members can continue having 10 projects on your list. Of course, you can swap it out and revise it after tonight's conversation. We will bring the revised estimates, of course. And then at the workshop, each council member will be given five chips or votes that can be placed on any of the five projects of your choice on this combined list. And then from there, council will finalize the city work program. Another recommendation for tonight is for council to identify a date for the workshop. I have included a calendar here, if that helps with us with this task. As you can see, we are, January 22nd is today, and that's circled on the calendar. And we have listed March 1st as an option. I just want to mention that even though Councilmember Wong is not attending this meeting, he did indicate that March 1st would work for him. So to close my presentation, here again are the recommended actions for tonight. At this time, I will turn it over to council. We are here for questions about the process, but we ask that you discuss your initial lists among yourself, have a conversation, and deliberate, and then, of course, open it up for public comment, after which we will look to council to pick one of the options that I just went over and select a date. And with that, I will end the presentation now, and we'll take questions.
Okay, questions first. So we'll have five minutes for each question, for each council member. I think Councilmember Wong has submitted a video comment. We will play that after the public comment, before the deliberation. So anyone has a question for staff? Councilmember Moheen?
Thank you, Mayor.
Tina, in one of your slides, you listed about five of the projects, and you said the amount of resources you have to spend on these projects is low, but the impact is high, and I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
Vidya, could you share Astrid's screen again? I think so the five, as I pulled as examples, those were, you know, projects that are either currently on our city work program list and will be completed. They were identified as priorities for council. So I'm trying to pull them up right now, too. Right there.
Yeah.
Yes, so as you can see, so these are, again, initial projects that came out of your, from your lists. And all of the projects that you have indicated on your lists would have a big impact. They're all priorities for council, but I wanted to highlight that these were identified through our preliminary resource allocation to be small to medium in terms of effort and time.
Okay, so when you talked about impact, you were talking about impact on staff resources?
Correct.
And budget?
They're still considered one item, whether it's large or small, but, you know, if the list has a good mix of small, medium, as opposed to all large, they're completed, and we can celebrate those victories together.
Okay, give me an example of what we can celebrate on this list?
So this is not the final list. We will celebrate all of them if we can complete them in the two years. But what I'm trying to say is if we come out of the workshop and the prioritization process with the list that's manageable, given our limited resources, it provides us an opportunity to celebrate the projects that we have completed together, right, staff and council. Those are priorities for us together, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else? Then I'll ask my question. So I'm not available March 1st. I have a commitment from 11 to 3. So is it possible to do it Friday night? It seems...
We are really looking at council to agree on a date. And we can pull up the calendar again if need be.
The night before, February 28th. I wish we could do it earlier, of course, but I don't know what everyone's schedule, maybe February, oh, so the week of February 17 is the ski week, if I had kids, but I don't have them now. But I don't know if anyone is taking a vacation that week.
Mayor Chow, just a reminder, this week of 17, 17 is a holiday, and we'll have a council meeting on the 19th.
Yeah, okay. So maybe February 28th will be a possibility?
We can certainly accommodate, and just want to remind that you also have your state of the city on the 26th, which will be an all-hands-on-deck activity, especially Tina's team.
Yeah. So, and then another question I have is, so two years ago, you say there are 20 projects in the two-year plan. But as I remember, we added quite a few projects last year in the second year of the two-year plan. So how many new projects were added in the second year of the two-year plan? I kind of remember eight or nine projects were added.
I believe there were 11 projects, but I'm...
So 11 new projects were added in the second year?
At the midpoint, correct.
Okay, so it's actually about 30 projects for the two-year, eventually. Okay, that's fine. And then I have concern about both options that the staff has proposed here. If each council member choose only top five, and we plan to have 20 projects, that means any of the projects likely will have only one or two council member who have chosen that project. I don't think that's a proper method for the work program. I like what we had earlier, which is all the council members give a ranking on all the lists, but not the 50 right now, but we probably need a little smaller list, and some of them are, can be combined. And then we all rank one or three or five, so each one, so there will be multiple votes on the projects that's eventually chosen. And so likely the ones that children have two or more council members who rank them highly. I thought that it's a more, it's a better way of ranking.
If I may suggest, under option two, Mayor, if instead of five chips, those five are five, one through five ranking, would that achieve what we're looking for here?
I don't think so, yeah. And let's hear from what other council members think. Or should we do this during deliberation? This is only a question.
And then I will also highlight, option one would be that there's no, you know, you don't have particular number of votes, you're ranking the entire list. So every council member will rank the list, and then we'll go back, tally that, and bring it forward to you at the workshop.
So it's more like, if we have 20 projects in the end, then you have 20 chips to put, for example. But then if you want 20, maybe you should have like 30 chips that you can place. Then you can have more, because if you rank a project highly, you can put three, then that we might have a better coverage of the projects. That's an example, yeah. Vice Mayor Moore, please.
Thank you for bringing the ranking system up. So to me, we're trying to generate ideas. What I've seen in the past is that depending on how the ranking system goes, it can turn into a game theory exercise, and then you might have council members politicking one another in order to push something that maybe doesn't get the opportunity to be discussed that it would need to, or certain things would get dropped off of the list. And presently, and I don't know if it's completely gone, but years ago, I tried to put Stockelmeyer onto the list, and it didn't make it the first year, it made it the second year. I'm trying to find it somewhere within either the work program or the CIP, and I'm failing to see it at this point. And there was, there had been support for looking at that project. So I want to make sure that we don't lose things and that they never get addressed as time goes on. So whatever the process is, that we can collect as many ideas and then see if they can be combined somehow, because we did see some commonalities, particularly like urban forest. We saw that that kind of wove through a lot of the plans in some form or another. If we can do that, I'd like to, I think that would work very well, and that we'd all each get to have a sense that we have a part of this work program, rather than having it become kind of too political and, and that.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're hoping with you all being able to look at and talk about your projects tonight, right? You can see that there is overlap, and how you may want to refine that and come back to the workshop will definitely help.
Councilmember Moheen.
Is this the time to talk about the process, or are we still just asking questions of...
Right now, it's questions, so you can ask questions about the process, I guess, yeah. I think at some point, I actually would like each council member, maybe you can go through your list, give your pitch for your top ten. Then we can ask each other question. I think that was the intent of today's, but maybe that's after public comment. So right now, let's ask questions about the process.
Okay. Can you put the slide up with option one and two?
Vidya, could we share our screen again, please?
I'll keep talking while that's happening. One of my suggestions was that there are a few projects that we all, that there is some overlap, as Tina mentioned. So for the preliminary list, if we could just add those, there are some things that we all agree on, or most of us agree on. So if there's anything in common, put that on the list. So I'm assuming there are about five of those. And then if we go with five of our projects, each of us, that's five times five is 25, 25 plus that five, 30. And then we bring that 30 to the big meeting, either whenever you decide that's going to be held, and then the focus at that meeting would be to reduce the number from 30 to 20. So we wouldn't be adding, but, you know, our projects, if we think it's important enough, will stay, and we will reduce the ones that we think are less important, so that it's a manageable number for staff. So we'd get it down to about 20. That's my suggestion.
Okay, any other thoughts? Councilmember Fuhrin.
This isn't directly on the process, it's more a question, and something I wanted to highlight on one of the slides. You have the hmm, large or small slide. And I just wanted to highlight, especially for those who are watching from home and so forth, is just sort of what the difference is here between a small work program item and what could be a very large capital improvement project. So the very first one here is a perfect example of that. It's a small work program item, because, again, we've done this work before, so revisiting it is not something that is going to cost us an enormous amount of time and effort and money. It's a matter of updating something that we've already done. However, to actually implement it and do it would be a very large multimillion-dollar undertaking. And so, you know, just looking at a title like City Hall Seismic Safety Issues is not a resolution to the entire issue. It is, how are we going to try to solve it through a plan that we can come up with? It's not the actual project itself. So that's just something I wanted to highlight.
Okay. Actually, I have a follow-up question with that. So the City Hall seismic retrofit, that was, we already, it was already on a CIP program earlier for a city hall renovation. And so you mentioned earlier, the city work program is different from the CIP, and CIP is this large capital project. So that means the city hall renovation probably shouldn't be on this list? So maybe the council should give direction separately for this CIP project we would like to see?
That's correct. If this was the implementation of, you know, any of the work or purchasing, building, leasing, temporary facility, all of the work around City Hall, it would not be a city work program item, but as is, the scope asks for us to determine options. And that is a small project. That's exactly what I wanted to highlight.
Yeah, thank you. I think earlier, we also had the renovation of the City Hall Annex done. That's already, there was plan to make that into a CEOC. So if we would like to see that proceed, that would be a CIP project, right?
We would need direction from council separately on that.
Separately on that for CIP. Thank you for the clarification. Vice Mayor Moore?
Okay, so along that same line, for instance, I've got City Properties 2.0. So it basically is going to start as, it would start as a city work program, but then, depending on where it went, it's going to become a CIP project. And it, okay, so that parts a little bit. I'm kind of curious how other cities handle things like that, when they're looking at, you're really looking at a CIP project, but we're calling it a, putting it on the city work program.
Vice Mayor, if I may. I think the city work, the city properties, we're looking for direction from council. So we still have a list of the city-owned properties, whether or not we should develop, lease, sell, or continue to hold on to it. That would be part of the city work program direction. Once council give a direction, either on the City Hall renovation or other properties, that will turn into a CIP project.
Okay, so I would be able to find that on the adopted 2425 city work program?
We will take it to council for the next budget adoption. So if council approves that as part of the CIP list, and yes, you will find it on the approved list.
Okay, but I'm not seeing it on any list now, okay? And that was the thing with regards to Stockelmeyer, it's like, well, we need to do some at least maintenance on this building.
Right.
Why did it fall off of all the lists?
Right.
Kind of thing.
I think the short answer is that we haven't received a direction from council on what to do. We've heard fixing, repairing, or demolishing, or rebuild, there's a whole variety of different direction coming to staff, but I think the city work program emphasis will be asking council for a refined direction.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know more questions, so let's open for public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak from within Community Hall, and I see three requests to speak virtually, so six requests total. And we have Roberta Holloman, Tyler Taylor, and Peggy Griffin.
So nothing online, right?
There are three individuals, members of public requesting to speak virtually.
So should we allow three minutes or two minutes to say?
So we have about nine people requesting 27 minutes so far.
Let's do two minutes each.
Okay. So Roberta Holloman, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members and staff. I'm Roberta Holloman. I'm here to support the inclusion of item number five, the Leadership Academy Program, on Councilmember Moheen's work priority list in your fiscal year 2526 work plan. This program will serve the community by finding and developing leaders for the city of Cupertino and community organizations through education, communication, collaboration, and experience. Representatives of community organizations have been working to recreate this program. City support will greatly facilitate the development. Topics to be covered are local government, land use and environment, business and industry, public education, nonprofit organizations, and involvement in the community. These topics are explored with classroom discussions, community research, and participation, participant collaboration. The Leadership Academy will provide participants with the basic tools and information to become a member of a city board or a commission, a local elected official, a member of a community board or organization, and an informed citizen. Your inclusion of this program in your work plan will significantly benefit the city.
Thank you. Next, we have Tyler Taylor, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedward. Welcome, Tyler.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. My name is Tyler Taylor. I am the CEO of Successful Aging Solutions and Community Consulting. More affectionate... I am the CEO of Successful Aging Solutions and Community Consulting, more affectionately known as Sassy. I also serve on the Santa Clara County Senior Care Commission and various boards and committees. I'm here tonight to thank Mayor Chow for including enhancing senior services as her number one priority in her preliminary list this year. Sassy is engaged right now in the early groundwork with a project with Deansa College called Senior Guided Pathways. And in that groundwork, we normally for other cities, we do the same thing at West Valley College. We just launched it last year. As part of that project, we assess the communities served by the community college, in this case Cupertino. Cupertino has a report called the Community Assessment Survey for Older Adults. Sassy has used that report in Saratoga, Los Gatos, Campbell, and Santa Clara. We've conducted it, performed gap analysis, and produced sets of recommendations for each community regarding its aging population and how to provide road mapping services for such. In partnership with Deansa College, Sassy would like to take a look at the Cupertino Community Assessment Survey for Older Adults in partnership with Cupertino Age Friendly and to assess the needs and gaps that exist here and produce a set of recommendations. We do this at no cost in partnership with the community college. So it would not generate a dollar sign or a little person icon on your list for us to engage in that activity. In any case, it would produce a good set of recommendations for the city and some work for the Cupertino Age Friendly people to engage in. We help assemble stakeholders and we provide guidance. So we're very much looking forward to working with the city, the stakeholders here, and the college to help enhance the lives of older adults in Cupertino. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tyler. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedward, followed by Debbie Timmers. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. First, on the ongoing current work program items, there are several that are RFP currently out. We're already working on it. Will staff has been internally preparing. So one question is, how do those things that are already in progress fit into this new list? Second, I would like to request that the Emergency Operating Center be number one on your priority. Set it up on the agenda. Give staff direction. Discuss it. People don't even know where it's at. I've had discussions where it was going to be at the maintenance field, it was going to be here. It was going to be at City Hall. It was going to be at the Annex. Where is it? We're overdue. So please give them direction, E O C. The other is give direction for the City Hall Seismic Safety. That's number two. Three, update the council procedure manual. Give them direction. The urban forest tree list canopy, you can come up with a list that fits in what's already being done. Restore commissions at least, the E R C. Public safety license plate readers, the we're bright at night. I've almost hit many people. People like to wear black. Ride their bicycles in the wrong direction, cross streets. It sounds like a simple thing. Block leader and neighborhood watch, again, safety. Update the city's impact fees. Reduce the scope of Memorial Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jean Bedward, followed by Debbie Timmers, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members and staff. I'd like to follow on Tyler Taylor's presentation and echo his his remarks. I am president of the Senior Center Advisory Council, and I also serve as a Cupertino resident to representative to Source the Sourcewise Advisory Council. And the senior center concerns actually show up not just on Mayor Chow's list, but also on Councilmember Mohan's list. We have an aging population, and we have a lot of resources, but they're not tied together, and that's the problem. We need to be looking at what the needs are. We've got the Godby Community Survey, which has just come out. We have the Casoa Report, which was done in twenty twenty-three and released in twenty twenty-four. And we also have a county aging area plan, which addresses countywide aging. This needs to be pulled together so we can have a program for Cupertino's seniors because each city has slightly different needs. And I would welcome a program with Deansa College. They have a very strong health technologies program that we should be leveraging. Because as we know, we need caregivers, and there will be an increasing number of caregivers in our community. So let's, as a city, start planning to how we can best accommodate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Debbie Timmers, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. I'm Debbie Timmers. I'm a ten-year resident of Cupertino. And I wanted to offer support for item five on Councilmember Mohan's list, Leadership Academy, to reestablish a leadership program in collaboration with neighboring cities and nonprofits, to educate the public on public policy issues and encourage new participation in our city's civic life. I'm currently a student at Leadership Sunnyvale, even though I'm a Cupertino resident. And I believe such a class would be valuable to have here where the goal is to provide citizens with the tools and relationships to make a difference in their community. Students learn how local government and nonprofits work together, and the program jumpstarts leadership potential. I have several co-students in my class with me that I think are going to be great leaders of Sunnyvale. They're very inspiring to me. We have a large number of impressive young people here in Cupertino. And I see them, you know, in my limited sphere, I see them at my grandson's, as my grandson's scout leaders, class parents, P T A members, and so on. And you probably know of many others in your circles. Cupertino needs a similar program to develop community leaders from this pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have Louise Sedadi. And then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Mohan, City Council members. I'm Louise Sedadi. I've been a resident of Cupertino for thirty-nine years and growing. I'm asking to for you all to please support the work program for funding to support creating an urban forest plan to increase the tree canopy in our city. We want to be able to enjoy having plentiful trees similar to what occurs in Palo Alto. We don't want to continue to lose trees in our city because of climate change and development until we become a concrete city like Los Angeles. Please also support a work program item to allow year-round access to BlackBerry Farm Pool and picnic areas. The residents work very hard during the week and need year-round access to BlackBerry Farm Pool and the picnic area to enable residents to have healthy outdoor interactions with their families and community with outdoor activities, exercise, and picnicking. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And there are three individuals requesting to speak virtually, San R, Tracy K, and Sima Linsgog. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I would like to actually express my support for the urban forest. It's not often that members of all sides of the community agree on certain things. And I was very happy to see this was high on Councilmember Fruance's list. It was high on public input that you got. My number one request to you would be to please prioritize our city street trees and the urban forest program and bring back a conscious and thoughtful expansion of our tree canopy. By doing so, you will improve the sustainability and the climate initiatives for the for the city. I believe this is already on the Climate Action Plan that was previously approved. And it also provides a significant amount of value appreciation for the community overall. When you look at cities that are highly valued, highly appreciated, Saratoga, Los Altos, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, all of them have wonderful mature canopies. I also ask you to please consider the input that candidates that ran for the recent election got from your from your community. So it shouldn't just be input that you hear from people that show up at these meetings. But please think back on the campaign platforms that you all ran on, both in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-two, and what you heard from residents. What I heard from the community top on the list was quality of life. And I ask you to please prioritize quality of life. If a project benefits the broader community, be it urban forest, be it improvements in parks, I I also agree with Louise Sedadi on the expansion of the BlackBerry Farm initiatives. You consistently heard from me that we need to increase our allocations to parks and wrecks. So maybe we can look at how do we utilize BlackBerry Farm for a year-round swim program that you can outsource to NACA or to Y M C A so that they can operate that profitably, and yet the community gets to benefit from the program. So let's look at better utilization of BlackBerry Farm. I'd also like to support the the congested road study, which I believe Commissioner Wong, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wong supported.
Okay, that was your time, San. Next, we have Tracy K, followed by Sima Linsgog. Welcome, Tracy.
Yes, I'm excited to see many of the priorities listed across the council members' list tonight, and I have faith that they will significantly benefit the city. I wanted to just share some of my opinions as a resident. There do appear to be some things in common, for example, business growth. I think you can consolidate much of the business growth initiatives across multiple council members' lists into sort of a broader initiative to support local businesses, whether it's through policy initiatives that make starting a business easier or that just make existing businesses more successful. I also think that streamlining permitting on single-family homes is consistent across many lists and is much needed. I also wanted to specifically highlight three initiatives. First of all, the seismic retrofit and E O C. This has been on the table for years, and the research around costs is already done. So if our number one priority is to keep residents and staff safe, I see no reason why you wouldn't return the low-cost retrofit and E O C back to the docket from a CIP standpoint. The second is Memorial Park renovation. This is the largest park in our city. It's centrally located near retail and housing, and a renovated park would positively impact our city by attracting more events, but traffic to surrounding businesses, and improving overall perceptions of Cupertino as an appealing city to work, live, and do business in. So please consider a scaled-back renovation. It doesn't even need to be forty million. I think there are many ways that you can care back the price to reasonable levels. And then the third, I like the defensible impact the Nexus study. Things I wanted to question, if we want to attract more businesses, let's not consider raising taxes on them. I did see that as one potential item. And also, if you can please clarify for urban forest, before we consider prioritizing it, that we are not adding too many trees near wood roofs. I think if you add them to like major downtown areas where there's a lot of concrete buildings, that's fine. But we want to be careful about where we're putting them. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And our final speaker is Sima Linsgog. Welcome, Sima.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Councilmembers and Mayor Chow, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am on the planning mission, but today I'm speaking on in my own capacity as a resident. I wanted to echo what some of the other residents said in terms of the City Work Program projects. I'd like to encourage the council to adopt the development of an urban forest plan, a ten-year plan. There is a very, we have one of the lowest canopies in Cupertino compared to other cities around us, and it is declining at fifteen percent. It is shockingly low. And it it is affecting our property values. It's affecting our quality of life. It's affecting our health and the economic value of our properties. And there is a deep divide between east and west in terms of the amount of canopies. So all of these need to be really looked at seriously. And most of the cities around us have an urban forest plan, so this is something that I'm really hoping you guys can adopt. Also, yes, please open BlackBerry Farm Pool and Picnic Areas year-round for a number of reasons. It's a possible revenue center for us and a great amenity for our residents, and it should be opened. And then finally, yes, support small businesses, help them thrive, attract mid-sized businesses to our city so we can diversify our tax revenue base. And then simplify permits for small home upgrades to allow residents to more easily do renovations and upgrades. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sima. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Thank you, Kristen. So now let's play Councilmember Wong's video comment.
Okay, video, would you please cue that up for us?
Hello, this is Ray Wong, and I want to share with you some of the council work priorities. I think it's really important for the public to understand that this only represents ten percent of our budget, and the input we have here is only hitting ten percent of the council budget. But these are very
Just a minute. It feels like there are two sound sources.
We may be experiencing double audio video is
Hello, this is Ray Wong, and I want to share with you some of the council work priorities.
Better.
I think it's really important for the public to understand that this only represents ten percent of our budget, and the input we have here is only hitting ten percent of the council budget. But these are very important areas, and I think a lot of people have taken written and given their feedback, and we've definitely accounted for them. I have been spending time on three main issues, trying to understand some first principles. The first one is really making sure that we are fiscally accountable, we are using our money in the best interest, where you've got our priorities in the right places. And this is in anything around public safety, emergency operations, these are going to be important issues. The second theme that's important for me is quality of life. We really do have to spend some time trying to improve our city services, our response to our residents, making sure that we are doing what a majority of residents are interested in, and making sure that we allocate our money in the right way. And the third one is we do have to improve our tax base. Economic development is important. We need to make sure that we have the right of infrastructure to support the right type of businesses that are coming here, and of course, the right tax base as we diversify tax bases from a single employer, as we also look at ways to actually tap into ecosystems of some dominant employers. So I think these are important areas to look at. So number one on my list is emergency operations readiness. We've seen what happens when we have tornadoes in Scott Valley, the fires in L.A. I hope everybody there is okay. Nobody's impacted on our side here. But I think those are important, right? And we really need to review our fire, earthquake, tornado, active shooter, tsunami, hazardous transport, accident policies, and ensure that our E O C is up and running, it's active and functioning with a permanent position, and not a consultant running the program. It's important to make sure that we have the right people there. Maybe we start with a consultant, we end up there, but we really need to look into this issue. We had a plan when we were supposed to move and retrofit the City Hall. It was a seven to eight billion dollar retrofit that even had a location for the E O C so we would not be caught off guard. This is a huge priority, and we should not be caught in that position. The second piece is economic development. We really need to bring back our Economic Development Committee. And I can't believe that's not here. And we actually have to start to explore a grant writer position, attract startups, get companies in that tech ecosystem that come here, work with other agencies and other parts from the state as well as the federal government to have that in place. I think there's also an important piece. I think some people have written in and shared their comments, and a small business revitalization ordinance is probably in the right line. I'm sure other members have something that's similar, but how do we streamline permitting? How do we explore more themed events like Restaurant Week and Bobatino? How do you attract more festivals, create a small business council, and of course, provide the regulatory support so that they can be successful? I think that Small Business Council is going to be even more important over time, especially as we try to attract businesses in other areas. And of course, we need to improve our single-family home permitting review process. We make it easier for developers, or at least it seems that way, and harder for residents. So even if that's the perception, we need to make sure that we make it easier for our residents, improve turnaround times, set SLAs for staff, outsource reviewers, also help people understand what the process is. Sometimes it could be your contractor, and so let's find out what the issue is and get that in place. We also need to think about thoroughfare congestion studies and road improvements. We are putting bike lanes We are putting bike lanes in places that might not necessarily be the right place. We're putting traffic stops and reducing lanes in places where people might not be happy with. We really need to understand our traffic patterns, and these are our big roads. Study Deans, study Stevens Creek, study Stelling, Wolf, Homestead, and Bullinger. Road improvement options might be adaptive traffic signals, no turns on red near schools during school hours, street paving, traffic enforcement of bikers, cars, and pedestrians. We see so many people running lights for cars or might hitting bikers, or bikers running stop signs that could hit a car or pedestrian. We need to actually fix that. And of course, Memorial Park renovation, that thing is bloated. Let's figure out how to reduce the plan or place in phases different types of review models such as concessions and services in the mix for the park and get something done over there. And of course, city hall retrofit and EOC readiness. We have a plan that the 2022 council had already passed. We need to actually use that, bring it back, and get the EOC migration. That doesn't take a long time to do. And then eight on my list is public safety, block leader, neighborhood watch. We still need to do that. We should continue the license plate readers, and of course, the 5G ordinance on architectural standards. Those are all very important, and we should consider those. Now, what should we take off the list? It's very hard. There are lots of priorities, and some priorities change as council majorities change. And some are actually important because they're current and important to the city. At this moment, I would take the Lehigh Quarry monitoring off. I would take the area around Tree List CBD, Tree List PW, take those off. I would be in favor of making sure that, you know, we think more about art in public and private areas, but take that off here. And of course, I would also think about how we actually take down some of the areas around bicycle facilities until we figure out how we want to pull all these plans together. So I think those can come off the list, but I'm curious to see what my colleagues have. So thank you very much for the time to share my thoughts. And of course, I want to thank the public and the residents for their input. It played a big role in the decisions I've made here in terms of my priorities. And of course, please continue to write to me as I'm curious to hear what your priorities are as well.
Okay. Thank you, video team. So I think Councilmember Wong started going through his list on why he thinks those are important. Why don't we each make our pitch for what we would like to prioritize on our list? Or each other's list? Who would like to start? Councilmember Mohan?
Okay, I have my list of 10, but this isn't, this is not in priority order, but these are 10, at this point, all of equal importance. And number one is business revitalization, and I wanted to talk a little more towards the end, Mayor Chow, after you've resolved, after you've heard everyone else. This is one of the items that has appeared on just about everyone's top 10 list. So we could sort of discuss that separately as something that should show up on the final list. Same thing with the building permit and inspection permit processes. I was hoping we could include that as part of business revitalization if necessary. But again, this is something that if we look at the priorities of the city, you know, we are losing revenues, potential revenues by just slowing down on repairs, remodeling, inspection permits, building permits, and so on. So I wanted streamlining of that, or staff to study how best to streamline that whole process. It's complicated, and I know how much demand there is, excuse me, for those services. The city hall seismic safety issues, this is something that we've just haven't been able to come to a decision on. We've talked about it, and I was hoping at the end of this process, we could actually come up with a determination of how best to proceed, which, you know, we've talked about lease, we've talked about a retrofit plan, and if we could get all the information together and make a decision, that would be a big project because we have been sort of postponing it and kicking this one down the road. The urban forest program is something that we've all, I think, agreed on, so I'm assuming that'll be on the final list. I think all five of us have mentioned urban forest program as something that is important to the quality of life in our city. The Leadership Academy is something I feel strongly about. I've seen it work in other agencies, and I've seen it work firsthand with the City of Sunnyvale. And the really sort of exciting news that I got from Sunnyvale that is that a big part of their commissioners and their council members had gone through the Leadership Academy before they assumed their present position. So there's a huge value in that, and I would support it wholeheartedly. The city's impact fees, again, this is something that we had all, I think, showed up on several lists, and so that's something we should include just because we all agree that that's something that needs to be done, and it has a revenue impact. The general plan community meetings, you know, this is something nice to have, just in terms of transparency and making, you know, issues transparent to the public. BlackBerry Farms Pool and Picnic Area, a couple of people mentioned that, and it's on my list because, you know, this was, basically, a CEQA review is needed for this to make sure that all the issues that were raised almost 10 years ago don't have the same impact today. In fact, most of the issues have been resolved, and I do not see any reason to keep the 100-day restricted operation of the BlackBerry Farms picnic facilities as well as the swimming pools. This is a public facility, this is a public park, it's a public space, and I don't think it's right that we do not allow public access to it year-round. There is also a budget impact on this because we use fees to use the pool and picnic facilities, birthday parties, and so on, that take place in the park, and we are not availing of that huge revenue benefit that we would get if the pool and the picnic area were opened year-round. The Lehigh Quarry, it is, in my opinion, less important because I think the staff is continuing to monitor the quarry activities, and my ask on that is if we could get an occasional, you know, a biannual update on what is happening, that would be good for the community. And last, an ad hoc senior commission. Again, I'm not sure how this is going to work. If I could get another few seconds, Mayor? One minute, maybe. I put it down as an ad hoc senior commission. I'm not sure it has to be a commission because I think commission is limited by Brown Act and so on, but my intent was to have some kind of a senior, maybe an advisory council or whatever name you choose to call it, but basically something that would open up the channels of communication between the various senior facilities that are in this city, given the fact that we are an aging population in this city. That's my top 10, and thank you for indulging me.
Thank you so much. Who would like to go next? Okay, then I will go next. Let me find my list. Okay. So mine is not really in priority order, but senior was, it is one thing that's high in my mind. So number one is enhance senior services. Due to the high cost of senior centers, many of our seniors actually have no choice but to age in place, but they still need a lot of services that's normally provided in a senior center, even common home maintenance. I have heard people talking about Palo Alto Avenue. They offer some kind of service and then other services by other seniors. We actually did a senior survey in 2022 and 2023, but we never had the presentation from that result. And then I'm happy to find the SaaS, Tyler Taylor, who spoke earlier, that they actually provide a free assessment to do a gap analysis based on the survey that we already conducted. So the idea is, based on that survey, maybe we could have, I think one thing Cupertino age-friendly proposed is a potential senior task force. We don't know whether it would be a commission or not because there is already a senior center advisory council, and maybe they want to keep that. I don't know what would be the best method going forward, but maybe for an ad hoc task force for this year, that's do that gap analysis and figure out what we need to serve our senior population better. So that's number one. Oh, I need to watch time. So I think another that's high on my list is our tax revenue. We need to find ways, and whether it needs resource, needs money, but this will give us long-term benefit, so we need to look into those potentials. One thing, these are just ideas. It doesn't mean I really push for those or I think those are feasible, but I think we need to explore. Real estate transfer tax that has been adopted by the voters in the last election or earlier, for example, Mountain View adopted last year, I think San Jose adopted earlier. The Mountain View one applies only to large transactions. The idea is, the city has upzoned a lot of property. Overnight, the land price for these properties increased even double. But who benefits? The property owner benefits while the city couldn't capture any of the profit, even though the increase in price is because of our upzoning. So the real estate transfer tax could capture some of this increase in land value so we can invest in affordable housing. We need a fund to provide affordable housing. And either head tax or other kind of business tax, I think we need to renegotiate our tax sharing agreement. We are currently giving 35% tax breaks for a company that makes huge amount of profit. We agreed on that when the, before the CTFA audit and when the company was in a different situation. Maybe it's time to renegotiate that. Maybe it's not head tax, maybe it's other format, but I think we need to reopen that negotiation. And then sales tax, I don't want to increase sales tax, but I wonder if there is a way we can adopt something so that in case the county passes a measure to take away our remaining 0.25% of sales tax, then the city major would become inactive. So the city, could we possibly, this is probably a city attorney question, could we adopt something by the voter that's ineffective, so we don't collect extra sales tax, but it's only effective if another agency tries to take away our remaining 0.5 to 5%. So that's the idea. Because if we don't do anything, the county could one day decide to take that away. I think I'm out of time. I'm only on number two. So anyone wants to pitch your items? Okay. If no one, then I'll continue. So number three is similar to Councilmember Wong. I think that's also common. We should reduce the scope of Memorial Park plan. A lot of times, we start with this grandiose plan, asking everyone, what do you want in your park? And then we accommodate everything people raised, and that turns into a very expensive plan. So I would like to see if we can scale that down. Number four, I'm not, it's similar to, I think Councilmember Wong wants a traffic congestion analysis. I think that's probably a very big scope, but the simpler thing is to just re-adopt to the level of service because that really evaluates the delays in traffic. That's a traffic congestion most people can feel. If we can adopt that as a major and use that to ensure accountability for traffic demand management system, then, which likely a lot of new development will have to adopt that could help us to mitigate traffic. And number five, that's high in my list. That's also, I think that's my top three is a defensible impact fee next to study. We were threatened with a potential lawsuit. As a result, the city waived $77 million in impact fees. That's almost one year of revenue that we could have gotten. But then I learned from another attorney that if we had designed our impact next to study carefully, impact fee is the most defensible among all of the major because the state is not allowed to give us amended mandate. So I would like to see, can we do a defensible impact fee next to study for traffic impact, BMR impact, but also retail impact fee? Because we are seeing almost every infill development is taking away our retail, almost 100% will be gone. So there will be, this development have impact on our revenue source. Can we charge retail impact fee on those? And then urban forest is also common to others. Number seven is strategies to enhance sales tax revenue. I think that's common in a lot of things. This is also, yet it might take effort, but this is a long-term priority that we must start if we want to ever resolve our structural deficit. How do we, when we have infill development that replace retail space, can, how can we, at least we know what's lost and can we reevaluate that? And also, for example, can we encourage work and live units on those townhouses that's along Stevens Creek? Because likely, some of those townhomes could become a business that's downstairs is business and upstairs is living space. Then maybe we can still capture sales tax from this townhome development if we allow them to be live work units. And B2B taxes, how, what kind of business generate B2B tax? And can we attract them to Cupertino? And what incentive we can give them? This is, I think it might be a big effort, but hopefully, maybe the Economic Development Committee can take a step on some of this and so we don't rely on too much staff resource in the first year. And then I would like to enhance notification methods, not only for general plan amendments, but also for development projects. So more detail is in the table. And number nine is not high on the list, but then it would be nice because we have a lot of development projects, and they, fixed percentage, I don't remember how much, would be for art in lieu fee. But I find out a lot of times, the developer gets to propose what art is included, and a lot of times, they don't really look nice. So I hope there is a better process with community engagement on deciding which art piece is used for the art in lieu fee. And commission enhancement, so to- And commission enhancement, so to restore some of the, remove the commissions. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Moore.
Okay, all right, thank you. So my first item is actually, I'm gonna lose my voice, to look at the work program history that we have and the key takeaways, best practices, mission and vision, goal categories, and staff suggestions for process improvement and workload management. Because as we can see, we've got projects which have a huge range, and I think we should have some guidance for how we make our selections and then how we word them as well, whether or not we're going to have specific metrics, which I tried putting in a couple of my items, or make these very, very vague and more policy-type of items. So again, like others have mentioned, mine are not in any particular order. And what I, going to this first item, what I'm not really wanting to see us do here is necessarily pitch our items. I'd rather see that we collect them all, have time to think about what we've heard from the public and what we would change about items that we have placed here already. I didn't select items to be removed. I wanted to think about it. And then when I see everything together and what other people wanted to remove, some of my thoughts have changed as well. So with that in mind, we have a growing homeless and RV population that needs to be addressed. So my item two begins with support for the unhoused two-point-zero. We've had this item before. And it just essentially continued the work program item. You have the list, so everybody can read this. I'm not going to just, you know, read this verbatim. Public safety two-point-oh. I really appreciate that staff provided some fire safety public education information just in the past week or so. At night, I would like there to be some kind of public safety for pedestrians and bicyclists implemented. I'm calling it the We're Bright at Night campaign. I don't want to get that confused with our Dark Skies effort. But what's happening is that we do have areas that are low light and people will go out on their bicycles in the dark without a, I've seen no reflector, no front light, no rear light, nothing, wearing dark clothes. And just last night, going into my own neighborhood, no light person, I know you're allowed to jaywalk, person jaywalking in the dark in the middle of the street, no, nothing reflective at all to tell that this individual was there. I had to flash my hind beams to tell that it was a person indeed and to steer clear. So if we could have some kind of, through the Fall Bike Fest, any kind of public education to remind people that they, people can't necessarily see you when you're, when you're out and about in the, in the dark. Now, we've had, one of the things in the past few months that we keep hearing about is California home insurance and that people are losing their home insurance. And if there is some way that we can help and see what Sacramento is doing in order to help homeowners, particularly the ones that we have in our woodland urban interface areas that we've, we heard from this evening, that would be great. I put an item here, Green Up Cupertino. This should actually be pretty affordable if you do the second item, which is, I'd love to see council go do the Caltrans and VTA cleanup, where we went on the Danza on-ramps and off-ramps and did trash cleanup. I think it sets a really good example to see your own city council out picking up trash and having volunteers from the community join us. So I'd love to see that a couple, a couple times a year. Treeless two-point-oh, here's where I tried to put in some metrics and put one hundred or more trees. I'm just throwing an idea out there so that we have something to, a goal to shoot for. Maybe it's a bad idea to put that metric. I would like to hear that. Same with the next one, the turf conversion. Water conservation is a way of life is going to result in the city not being able to irrigate the non-functional turf areas. And I'd like to see those converted to pollinators supporting plants, trees, and California natives and things like that. City Properties two-point-oh is a revisit, and I kind of lumped all these properties in together. Stocklemire, the Torrey Annex, City Hall. We've got the retrofit, and I know that that's come up a couple of times. Bus stop inventory, this is a real simple, see what we can do to improve our bus stops within the city, coordinate with VTA, bringing shade seating and safety lighting. Silicon Valley Hopper, the eight million dollar grant is going to run out. What are we going to do when that happens? We need to look ahead. And then lastly, environmental hazards is to add the DTSC and the DTSC sites and the GeoTracker sites actually as well to the GIS mapping layers within the city systems to improve public awareness. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Frue.
So I broadly agree with Vice Mayor Moore in terms of what I would expect to get out of today in sharing our ideas and trying to narrow the focus of some of what it is that we'd like to do so that this entire city work program can be actionable at the end of the day. And that's very much what's guiding why my list is considerably shorter than most of the others. I've tried to keep it down to things that I thought were going to have high impact, that continued items that were currently on the work program or have been on the work program in the past and either didn't get funding or for which funding source couldn't be identified, or that are far enough along already in the process that they warrant continuation and being reprioritized somewhere higher on the list. I also, you know, I feel like there were a number of things that we spent considerable time two years ago trying to make happen, like the tree list. And I was really proud that we were able to come to some compromises on those. And since it seems like everyone has bitten off on the idea of an urban forest plan of some kind, that roping those two efforts into it seems appropriate. So I'd like to find a way of preserving some of the work that we've already done there and the commitments that we've made in terms of compromise with each other by putting those, those efforts together. So that's one of the things that I noted on my items to remove. I'm not really removing anything so much as I am consolidating them and finding a way for us to still do them in a fashion that makes sense to me. Similarly, we have a lot of notations here from folks who are interested in sort of the public engagement strategy that we have, especially around new development. And one of the things that continues to, I think, sit with all of us is the degree to which perhaps the nature of public engagement during the housing element process didn't reach everybody that we would like it to have reached, because otherwise, we wouldn't have the folks who are coming to council at nearly every meeting, talking about projects that at this, this stage of the game already have applications that are protected by state law. And it would be much better to front-load those discussions and have them at the beginnings that folks don't feel blindsided. So I do think that revisiting some of our public engagement strategies surrounding those things is important. I just think that we can focus it specifically on items like this, by giving it a narrower scope. That way, again, it's actionable. And also noting that, you know, we are not too far away from when we're going to have to start planning for our next housing element. And I would like us to learn those lessons while they're fresh in our minds so that we have better conversations going forward. One of the special pitches I will make is with respect to the heart of the city's specific plan. This is a city work program item that didn't get any separate funding in the last cycle, to the extent that we can secure outside funding for it so that it doesn't impact the, anything in our unrestricted fund. I would, you know, I would be entirely on board with that. But the reason I put it here is fairly simple, and I think that the mayor has alluded to it already. It is that we have, you know, a lot of space in the city that has older commercial sites on it. And over time, as those continue to redevelop, there's no guarantee that they will continue to have commercial uses on them. And right now, the thing that most sticks out to me is that almost everywhere in the heart of the city, you can build a townhouse-level density right now. And there's a lot of incentive to build that particular type of housing typology. It's a very nice type of home. Problem that I see with it is that we aren't really engaged in building out the heart of the city as a place-making exercise or securing the future that we need for ongoing sales tax revenue. And certainly not at the types of densities that those sites deserve, given the types of amenities that are around them and the types of public transit that's there. And I think that almost all of us have generally viewed transportation-oriented development as being valuable in the city and as the type of place where we should be putting new development in general. It would certainly take some of the pressure off of other parts of the city where there aren't the types of parcels that are available in the heart of the city. So I think that that's a valuable one to, to make happen, perhaps even as part of our various commercial and small business revitalization plans. So those are my thoughts for now, and I will hold on to my remaining twenty-one seconds.
Okay, thank you. Anyone has questions to other council members on their items? Vice Mayor Moore.
I just have a quick one, because I saw bicycle facilities was in, to be removed suggestion from one council member, and I see bicycle facilities are listed as continuing the existing city work program item. I was wondering if maybe someone from staff could refresh my memory, what, what is meant by bicycle facilities? Because that could be a number of things, you know, bike storage or bike locking or bike lanes. I'm not really sure.
Let me look at the description of the item. So the bicycle facilities, the project as is listed is increase the inventory of bicycle facilities and amenities such as bike racks citywide.
Okay, so it is, it shouldn't be a very high-cost item. Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question. So in the current work program items, which items will, will not be complete by the end of the year? So I see the active transportation plan. And then do we not expect the bike facility to be complete this year?
So in Attachment D, Mayor, there is a column that shows status of each of the items. And it shows all items except for art in public and private areas will not be completed by June and will continue on unless removed by council.
Wait, so this ongoing current work program, you mean they are all not going to be complete by the end of the year?
Correct.
So if they are not selected, they are discontinued?
Some of them are far enough that they will be completed, but, you know, there are items on here that council can and have indicated they want to remove from the work program.
If I might, Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to qualify one point, you said the end of the year, but you were referring to the end of the fiscal year, June.
Correct, June thirtieth.
For example, the 5G ordinance, I remember on the website it says eighty percent complete. So some of these are like eighty percent complete.
That is correct, Mayor. So some of the work item has been substantially completed, but we don't know if we're going to be able to finish and bring to council for adoption before end of June. So it does make go past the two-year program. So the two-year goes from March, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year. So some of these ongoing projects will still continue.
Yeah, like the residential and mixed use, that has been on there for quite.
We have just now finishing up the RFP to get the consultant to get the work done. When we put together, well, when council put together the city work program two years ago, we have explained some of them is going to take longer than two years, which is why we went from one year to two year, but with the understanding that some of them is going to linger. The active transportation, we're just getting the consultant started.
I understand it's just starting. But for example, the residential and mixed use, it's expected to end, end of this year, the December thirty-first. So whether we include this item or not, this will continue until it finishes, right?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that.
Because substantial amount of work has been completed.
Yeah, so unless we say we stop, otherwise it's assumed that this would complete. Okay.
Correct, which is why I will put in a plug for Tina's slide that the city work program, number one priority for council, but really a small sliver of city staff workload.
Yeah, okay. So anyone has, oh, Tina, you have a comment?
No, I was just gonna just say, you know, I wanted to thank council for all of you for going through your projects and pitching your projects to each other. And I just wanted to remind council, we are looking for direction in terms of the process that you prefer and a date if possible.
Okay, and if anyone else, anyone has question for other council members regarding their items? No? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Frue.
Yes, I have a quick question for you, Madam Mayor. With respect to your second-listed item, tax measures on the two thousand and twenty-six ballot, the first notation is to a real estate transfer tax similar to Mountain View in San Jose. Are you talking about a documentary transfer tax?
I think in, in San Jose, there was a document transfer tax.
Yeah, Measure E. To the city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that that's, that we are capped out as a general law city as, as regards a documentary transfer tax.
That may be the case, I would have to confirm that.
Okay, yeah, because I investigated this exact issue last year. It is available to charter cities, but not to general law cities.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say just generally with respect to the revenue measures that are, that are, that are in some of these ideas, that those would all have to take legal, have significant legal vetting before they could move forward safely.
So the, the one that just got adopted last year in Mountain View, it wasn't called the document tax, it was called transfer tax. I was not sure if it's the same thing or not.
So they may call it something, but, but its legal meaning would be the same. And my understanding is.
They are a charter city too?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But if there is, then the question would be, is there a potential tax measure that for general law city to capture potential increase in property value as a result of city action? That's the, that's what I'm trying to explore.
Yeah, that, that sounds interesting.
So here is what I'm thinking. If we each only pick five, but eventually there will be twenty on the work program, that means there might be none that has the majority of the council. And I don't think we, it's very hard to pick just five. So I'm thinking, okay, if the final twenty has three votes, at least support from the council, then that means it's sixty votes total. Then dividing sixty by five council member, that's like twelve votes. So it's like you get to vote for twelve projects, but then you can put two votes on the same project if that's your high priority. So I'm kind of thinking that might be a way to, to, to do the ranking is we, we each have twelve chips to, to vote on the project. But then that also means in average, each one would only get almost three. So maybe it should be fifteen, because I see a lot of consensus between us. Some probably will get five votes. So then, so maybe we should have fifteen chips each, so that's one thought. Then another thought is, there is a lot of, I think, common, commonarity between us. So it feels like maybe we could have a subcommittee, maybe Vice Mayor and me can have a subcommittee try to combine the items. And then we vote on those items. Or maybe the staff does that. the items, and then we vote on those items. Or maybe the staff does that. What do you think about it?
Mayor, if I may, so we had an slide with the two options presented to council. Video, can you share that slide from Astrid's desktop one more time? And I appreciate council trying to really work with us, trying to identify the process. Would this help? I mean, this is something that we have put together and kind of giving the two options for council to consider.
And as I mentioned earlier, just to add on, option one is, is the same process we did two years ago, where council will rank all of the projects on the list, on the combined list.
So option two, we would each keep, do we submit a revised 10-project list, or we just keep this 10-project list? And then, I don't see a combined list. So the staff will give the council a combined list.
Correct, and both options, sorry.
But then we only have five chips that can be placed on any five of the combined list, which is the problem, that you are going to have a list that maybe none of the project has three votes. Or maybe some, five projects have three votes, but we actually thinking about 20 projects for the two-year plan. So the five chips is insufficient. That's why I'm proposing maybe 15 chips, because we are talking about 20 projects. And you, 15 doesn't mean you are putting 15 different projects, right? You likely will be putting more on your high priority ones. That way likely the...
So if I may, Mayor, on both options, you will have, you have an opportunity, council will have opportunity to refine your lists ahead of either of these options, ahead of the workshop. So based on the discussion today, there are some similarities and overlap that's emerged. So those could already be indicated into your refined list as staff will receive ahead of the workshop. So there should be a list that will include the priorities based on the discussion tonight.
But both of these options has the flaw that each council member gets to only pick five, which doesn't work.
And if, as collectively as council, if you, if you have an option that works better for process, whether it's a combination of option one and option two, we're just looking for direction from the entire council tonight.
So I think what we had in the past is maybe we have a combined list, and then we do a ranking. So then number five, I guess, at that time, we say X number of five, X number of three, X number of one. And then we, then we will have a rank for each of the project, and then we have a ranking of all the projects. So that way, will that still work better? Yeah. Okay, I see. Sorry, I don't know who raised their hands first.
I probably went first.
So, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Moore, and Councilmember Fruen.
No, so my suggestion was there are five items that overlap or that, that we all have in common. And one was the urban forest program, the business revitalization program, city hall in some form or another, impact fees, we all agreed on that, and senior services, there were at least two of us that had it in common. So my, I thought was put all these five on the list. Five for sure on the list, and then five, each of us picks five. So that's 25 items, 25 plus five is 30 items. So we bring the 30 items back for discussion. So at least whether we decide to keep them on or take them out, we are focusing on 30 items versus 50 items, or 50-plus items. So that would just narrow our focus. And then using Vice Mayor Moore's example of Stockle Meyer, which somehow seemed to disappear, if it's on her top five, it'll be on her top five. And if, as a council, we decide we don't like it, then it'll be an actual discussion we will have about the item that she's advocating for. And vice versa, we can keep it on. But this way, her priorities stay on the list.
What does other council members think about it? Vice Mayor Moore, and then Councilmember Fruen.
Well, it seems like you're already kind of prioritizing, which we're not supposed to be doing tonight, with, when you are taking a certain number of projects and pushing those ahead. So I can say, looking at my own list, that I would, I can think of three or four of the items that I would either, either remove, and I prefer what other people have on their list, and I would want to have another chance to turn, turn in a list of up to 10 with those changes, and also rewrite some of them for, for clarity purposes and to just make them better. So my preference would be that we have a second round of turning in our, I lean towards option two. I'd like to have a, have a, have the opportunity to, if there's items that we like from other people's lists, we want to incorporate them, go ahead and do that. Or not, you know, stick with what you have. And, and when, when we go to weight things, one way we can do this in the matrix is that if, which we did do a few years ago, was to be given a certain number, and if you're trying to have a breakout between the items to find out how much, how much support there is, you can go like 10, five, and one for your weighted matrix, or some other method. I would take off personally the review the work program history. It's not going to help us for this go-around. But when you're looking at projects that are small versus, versus the large expensive projects, I hate to see a small project get ranked at the very top when we have these things that are going to morph into the work program items and become very expensive, and something might get pushed down and not really get the attention. Also, from bringing back that Stockle Meyer example, we have, I look at that one as being really sad that it hasn't been addressed, because we have the responsibility from our municipal code to maintain our structures. We own that structure, we're not maintaining it, and we're kind of mandated to take care of it. And it was, it was, I asked to get it on the list my first year on council, didn't happen, got it on the second year, and then it's vanished off, and this much time has happened. So for individuals who are proposing things on a work program, you might think it's going to happen, but within two years, it can be vanished off the list and nothing, nothing gets done about it. We can be saying urban forest, nothing, if we, if there's no metric, anything that says that you're going to, you know, plant 10 trees in the next year or, or something, if it's just to, we're going to make a plan, there's nothing that says that anything will actually get done. And I think there's, we need to have some, some way to ensure that some of these projects actually come to fruition, and that this isn't just kind of an aspirational list that, that if, if we don't have the support from staff, if we don't have the support from the next council, that we were spending a lot of time without having something to show for it at the end of the day. So I think with regards to the five-chips idea, I would prefer we move to something more like the weighted matrix, and we have a chance to separate things out. If council, when we get to this meeting, we decide we want to have the items broken out into the expensive section and the less expensive section, that would work well. But as Councilmember Fruen pointed out, some of these things might look less expensive, but at the end of the day, that's really going to be a huge CIP expense. So that caveat should probably be marked somehow. But I would go with a greater spread between the numbers, the 10, 5, 1, rather than the 5, 3, 1. So you can get a greater sense for what council's feelings are on, on particular topics. And there was some, you have to make a pretty smart guess for how many 10s you're going to offer people to place, how many 5s you offer, and how many 1s that you offer, because that also gets into what you're ultimately kind of mathematically going to end up with for, for your, for your result, for, to distinguish things. So that's something the staff can think about.
It's 10:18. I think we're 12 minutes away from having to vote before we start a new item. So I think any, any of the consent agenda item, do they have to be heard today?
I think all of them are important, but the understanding from staff is that there's nothing that, that would be urgently need to be heard, heard today.
Okay, so we can hear them next. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, staff's waiting all night. Would it be nice to give them a date? Is it going to the next meeting, or, I mean, I would like to give them some certainty.
I think we are almost done with this item. And by 10:30, maybe we can extend the meeting till 11:30, and that's too late, yeah. So extend it till, till 11 o'clock, and then we may be able to hear two items. But then do we have to start, or we can vote? So we don't, we can start them later?
You would need a vote to start after 10:30.
Okay. Do I need to do that before 10:30, or we can finish this item and then vote on that?
I would recommend that you finish the current item and then vote.
It will be after 10:30, but it's okay to still vote for that. Okay. So, Councilmember Fruen.
So I want to echo a number of the things that Vice Mayor Moore has said, and I think that what both you, Madam Mayor, and the Vice Mayor are trying to get to is a desire to wait the scorings that you're making. So that there might be things that, for example, we would all think are of medium value, but that could get lost if all we had to do was drop one chip on something, right? And so if that's what we're trying to solve for, and I don't really have a problem with, with that method, perhaps staff can help us in devising something, even if we needed to take a five-to-10-minute break to let them brainstorm a bit.
I'd like to propose something, okay, and see if maybe, so it's a combination of what staff proposed and the weighted idea. So each council member submit a revised top-10 list, and then the staff create a combined list from the five revised lists. There might be 30 to 40 items, hopefully not much more. And then each council member submit a ranking of top five, middle five, and lower five. And so it might be similar like we did, if it's a higher number, it's three points for the top five, or five points for the top five, three points for the middle five, one point for the lower five. That way, it will separate them apart. Then we will have a ranking of these projects. How is that? It's Mayor Moore.
So I'm confused. If we each turn in a revised top-10, potentially that's 50 projects, and you're saying have a top five, middle five, lower five? I don't understand. If I've got 50, how's that working?
It likely won't be 50, because I think we have consensus on five since.
Okay, let's see.
Then that means mainly likely, likely 30, and at most 40, I think. And, but then we will be, then each have five. Pick five is our top list, five medium list, five lower. The reason 15 is eventually there will be 20 on the work program, right? So likely 15 of that 20 is something we have picked, whether it's high, medium, or low. Yeah, so there is some support for...
Yeah, so I mean, I think what the mayor is proposing is that each council, council member submit a, you know, a new top-10 list. Staff would eliminate any duplication, consolidate any duplication in that list. The council members would get to vote for up to 15 items on that list, but then they would divide, you know, those 15 votes into high, medium, and low priority, with, you know, five points being assigned to the high priority, three points being assigned to the medium priority, one point to the low priority. Staff would, you know, you know, would, would add those votes together, and you know, you would, you would get a list from top to bottom with most, the most of these votes. And then there would be a process, you know, a decision to make about what sort of the cutoff point would be for, for items that, that, you know, would be on the list or not. And of course, council could always choose to re-rank things at the meeting if they wished, but, but that would give you, I think, a good starting point for your next discussion of this item.
Yeah, exactly. That's not the final list. It's a starting point when we have the council workshop. How is that? Yeah. Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you. Well, I think I'd rather be able to pick 20 and go 10, 7, 4, 1, instead of 15, 5, 3, 1, if that's at all possible.
10, 7, 4, 1, what do you mean?
You can pick five, give them 10s, give, pick five, give them 7s, pick another five, give them fours, and the last five get ones. So you get to select 20 out of the 30 to 40 possible.
Oh.
Just as an alternative.
Because 20 is the final, so at least there is one, yeah. I'm okay with that. So any other comment? Okay. Do we need a vote, or the staff has direction?
So I, so I, if I may, so I think, I think that I hear that there, there are two kind of ranking systems on the table. I think there's, they're pretty similar concepts, right? They're just sort of different numbers that people are throwing out. So it might, it might be helpful for staff to get direction on which ranking system the council prefers.
Thank you. I support Vice Mayor Moore's proposal. Councilmember Fruen?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify at what point we would be doing the ranking. Is this something that we would be doing at the workshop, or is this something that we would be doing in the interim so that it can be scored by the time that it gets to us? That's the one thing that I would, I would want to know in advance.
I think we will score that before the workshop. So in the workshop, we'll have the ranking already, right? Vice Mayor Moore?
I think there was another part where we needed to choose the date, and I don't think we got there. I think that's like the last part before we go vote.
That we can figure it out, I think, after, well, it's...
Tina, you want to elaborate on that?
For, so for the date, yeah, we would, we would really be appreciative if we can have a date tonight, so that way we can work backwards into planning for the workshop. There are quite a few steps, as you can imagine.
I think in terms of work hours, February 28, Friday night, wouldn't be too much different from March 1, right? So how is February 28, Friday night, working for everyone? Vice Mayor Moore?
I wouldn't generally put Friday night as people's most creative thinking time, just saying.
The council workshop, the council goal setting used to be usually Friday night or Saturday morning. And I think Saturday morning also is not the best time for a lot of other activities.
Mayor, from staff perspective, if I may... Mayor, from staff perspective, if I may, the state of the city is a very large event for the city, and it would be nice to get a day or two break that week.
But March first and February twenty-eighth is the same. You are now going to, the prep time is the same, right?
Mayor, can I suggest another date? What about March fourth, the regular council meeting date, and if we can start early? We do have a couple items that's lined up right now, the mid-year budget being one of the big item, and then a couple of other contracts. However, we can start, say, about five o'clock, or even earlier on that day. That will give you a workday, and then also the regular council meeting time to carry out this conversation.
I thought this will take three hours. How many, how much time we think we need?
We budgeted about sixty today, and then we're going at two hours.
Yeah, so how about March third? Let's have a special meeting on the Monday night?
Or the fifth, which is a Wednesday.
Third or the fifth, yeah.
Let me double-check with staff on other commission meetings. I know sometimes audit meets on Monday. I don't know when the next audit meeting is, I'll double-
Audit is four o'clock, right?
I don't want to speak for the two council members that has-
I don't know when that meeting is.
I don't know on top of my head, but like I said, we could always look at March fourth as an alternative.
I would rather not be on the regular council meeting date.
Through the mayor, is, a question for the city manager, is Sunday one to four, would that be kind of an off-limits timeframe?
It's not an off-limit, all times are good. We would just have to poll number one for available facility. So Rochelle's telling me that the fifth has a library commission. We want to make sure that Sunday afternoon, community hall, sometimes is rented out for other events. So we want to make sure that we have other location. We could look at library extension, Quinlan, or other locations. So it's more of a logistic. We could certainly entertain a Sunday afternoon option.
Okay, March seventh works for me. I guess Saturday and Sunday, the same. Okay, so we will decide-
We would appreciate if a date could be set today, so like Tina said, that we can backtrack on-
But council member Ray is not here, so we will, we cannot likely decide that. So we can decide options, right?
Is there a different timeframe on March first that would work for you, Mayor? Because I mean-
Eleven-two-three doesn't work, so at night is, after four is okay, four-two.
That's, I mean-
Or after three, I can leave that, or, so after three is okay.
What about eight to eleven? Eight to eleven?
I have committed meant at eleven, so I think we have a performance that... I think it's early, so I cannot-
Let's look for a weekday, okay?
I think weekday is better?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, March, yeah, see if March third would work. If Audit has a meeting, is it possible they could meet a different date?
Sure, what time, if we're going to go with March third? Four o'clock, five o'clock?
Five to seven or eight, right? Five o'clock, six o'clock, five is okay. So suppose that doesn't work, does Sunday work for other people? Sunday works for me. So that's just options to consider, but preferably Monday, right? That's the first option.
So why don't we go with March third, if I can have council make a motion? We'll definitely follow up separately with council member Wong. I understand he's-
I would rather not to make that a motion, because I find out if we make that, it's very hard to change. So let's just give a direction, this is a preference. And so that we have the flexibility to poll the council and determine a date. Okay? So are we settled on the ranking system? Do we, because I don't know, council member Mohan and Fuwen, are you okay with what Vice Mayor Moore proposed?
In terms of the ranking?
Yeah.
I'm fine with the ranking system. My principal concern is with this date. I would prefer the third. Or even as the city manager had suggested, rolling it into the regular council meeting. I mean, that's a time that people would expect to be here anyway. I will note for those who've mentioned the fifth, outside of the library commission, that is also Ash Wednesday.
Okay, so the third? So the sixth, Thursday, how about Thursday? I would rather not on the same day as the regular meeting, because I expect this to be two hours, right, at least? And Thursday is already very, very tight date for me, so-
So how about Monday, the third?
Yeah, so Monday is the preferred date.
Okay.
And so maybe the sixth, is that a second preferred date, Thursday?
There is a commission meeting on the sixth, Parks and Rec Commission.
The best not here.
Through the mayor, I think what Tina's saying, that we've been cautiously, not, cautiously in the past, not put any council meeting together with another commission meeting, so they will force the residents to pick which meeting to attend.
Okay, that's true.
If I may suggest, if the third is an option that could be considered, council can give direction as that date to be TBD for now?
Yeah, that's a preferred date. I think we are, we have consensus on that. And the Sunday, the second, is not preferred, right? No, yeah, okay. And then the fifth is another commission meeting?
I have tick listed as-
And I think library commission.
Tick and library.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Mayor, would a motion be helpful?
Do I need a motion, or I think the direction is clear? Okay.
I think the city manager would prefer a motion.
Thank you, Chris. I would prefer the motion, just so that we could backtrack on the dates to get the list and other things from the council.
On the date only, or the other things too?
I would appreciate a motion on the process and also the date.
So I'll make the motion that we, the process is each council member will submit a revised top-ten list. And the staff will create a combined list from the five revised lists. Each council member then will submit a ranking of twenty projects, with the points of ten-seven-four-one, five for each, each points. And the staff will, and this ranking will be submitted before the council workshop, upcoming council workshop. And the staff can decide the timing, like when we should submit the revised list, or when we should submit the ranking. And the preferred date for the council workshop is March third. But if that really doesn't work, we will then have to poll council members and then decide. But third is the preferred date, with a start time of, say, five o'clock. But maybe sixth, if Audit is four to six, so.
I didn't catch the last part.
Oh, I mean, start time is five or six o'clock. Because if the Audit is, as I remember, it's four to six, then maybe we need to start after that. So I'm not, yeah, so this is preferred date and time. Okay, that's the motion. May I have a second?
A second, a second.
Yeah, it's council member Moore, yeah, okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Okay, so we have twenty minutes. I think we have polled three consent agenda items.
As a point of order, we would need to take a vote to extend it this time.
Yeah. So first, we take a vote to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock? Yeah, it's Mayor Moore.
I have a clarifying question of the procedures manual for the city attorney. And I'm sure that this, you know, can be overridden, but it says that an agenda item... City council discussion of an agenda item shall not begin after ten-thirty PM. So how does this work that, I mean, it's after ten-thirty, and then you were trying to hold a vote to extend the meeting? But the procedures seem to be pretty clear about not starting another agenda item.
Right, so I've always interpreted the procedures to allow council to vote to extend the meeting after ten-thirty, you know, and then at that time, you could continue the substantive discussion of the agenda item. So that, you know, so, you know, obviously council could decline to follow that interpretation, but that's how I've always interpreted it, to give you the flexibility to have a vote now to continue discussion.
Okay, and it does say at the end that we can suspend the rules by a vote of the majority if the interpretation is-
Right, if you disagreed with me and still wanted to continue the meeting, you could suspend the rules, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I make a motion that, maybe I'll just make this together. The motion is we extend the meeting till eleven o'clock, and then we consider consent agenda item seven and... I wish we consider seven and nine, I think those are two simple ones. Seven... But I cannot reorder them now, right? Can I?
You could add that to your motion if you wish.
Okay, and I'd like to consider item seven and nine first, and then item eight, I hope we get to that.
As long as, if you have a second, you can go ahead and ask for a vote?
Okay, can I have a second?
Moore, second?
It's Mayor Moore, okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Okay, thank you. I hope we finish item seven, five minutes, item nine, five minutes, and item eight, ten minutes. Okay, item seven, authorization to execute a joint-use agreement for continued public access to Santa Clara Valley Water District property situated along a portion of Stevens Creek Trail. The reason I pulled that is there is a lot of public interest, but it seems, it's based on a misunderstanding, because this joint agreement is only on one parcel of property that Santa Clara Valley Water owns. So city manager, you have something to add?
I don't, I don't. I just want to point out that we have issued two rounds of supplemental questions, and we appreciate the clarification from Mayor Chow, but I think we've provided additional information to clarify those confusion. We're here for any questions that hasn't been answered in the supplemental, but we don't have a presentation prepared.
So I think we'll see if there is any public comment, and then we'll come back.
I currently see no request to speak for item seven, Mayor.
Okay, great. Any questions from the council members? No? Vice Mayor Moore?
Okay, I'll put the map on the overhead really quick for your five minutes on this item. Okay, so this is just to clarify that the parcel is near McClellan Road. It is not next to Stevens Creek Boulevard on the north side. And so I hope that members of the public got a chance to look in Exhibit A of the actual agreement, so that they can see where the parcel is located. And it's in a treat section that the city has been enjoying for many years already. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. So does the city have any other joint agreement with Water District on other property? I think we have one with, for Rick Knott Creek Trail area.
We might, I don't have that information right now, but I can certainly get back to you.
Okay, great. Because I think there are other properties owned by Water District. So I'm curious, in case of any encampment or other things, do we have any agreement on how to handle those? Thank you. So, may I have a motion? I already asked, yeah? So, may I have a motion? I'll just move the item for the recommended action, authorize the city manager to execute a new joint-use agreement with the Santa Clara Valley Water District for ongoing access to the district's property situated along a portion of the Stevens Creek Trail.
Second.
I have a second, okay.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion carried unanimously with Wong absent.
On target, five minutes. Item nine, approve an agreement with Advanced Systems Group LLC for modernization of broadcast TV and community hall integration for not to exceed amount of one-point-one million dollars and ten percent contingency in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten thousand for a total not to exceed amount of one-point, one-point-two-one million dollars and associated budget modification with a cost to be funded by public education and governmental PEG funds. Okay. So the reason I pulled this item is, this item is, was not in this year's adopted budget, and I thought it should at least be on the CIP list, but it wasn't on the CIP list. For transparency, I don't think this additional funding, even though it's from a dedicated fund, should be a consent calendar item. But I recognize that this is likely is an important upgrade, and the one-point-two million include the feasibility study and equipment upgrade. So, any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have one request to speak from Peggy Griffin. And I see one member of the public requesting to speak virtually.
Okay, let's have one minute each.
Oh, yes, have it, yes. Also Jean Bedorg.
Okay, one minute each, so we can finish.
Welcome.
Good evening. I apologize if the answers are in the supplemental report, I haven't looked. With one minute, I would like to know, I'm concerned that the funds could be used for the EOC rather than community hall, if, I think EOC is a priority. Also, I'm concerned about the impact to the use of community hall. It's scheduled to not be done till August of 2027. So where will the council meetings go? What's the impact? Project Creep compatibility with Quinlan? Quinlan was updated in twenty twenty-two. Will the same facilities work? And the control center? I was told that the control center is in city hall, but if you're going to redo city hall, are you gonna spend all this money there and then redo city hall? I think you need to get your order straight, I think. Uh, anyway, um, thank you.
That is your time. And next we have Jean Bedore.
Ask the staff to answer it after all the public comments.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedore and I am a Cupertino resident. And frankly, this should have just stayed on the consent calendar. Uh, the funds are dedicated funds. Peggy's, uh, questions are answered in the supplemental, you know, and I highly support this. You know, twenty years ago, this setup was state of the art. Well, guess what? Technology changes and the current system is very inefficient. From a, a staff standpoint, it's my understanding that it takes at least a couple of people to run, two to three people to run all, you know, everything that needs to be done here. The idea of moving it to the, this location instead of in city hall and using up-to-date equipment makes all the sense in the world. I totally support this. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Jean, and we have two members of the public requesting to speak virtually, Josh Young and Sam R. Uh, welcome, Josh.
Yeah, hi, city council. Uh, my name is Josh Young. I am the operations manager for K M B T. Uh, we work closely, our team works closely with your team and shout out to the people who are currently working in, inside the control room right now. The control room that you guys have is unique in that it was designed, installed and operated by your video engineers that you guys have currently. And, uh, this, this upgrade is definitely needed. Um, if you do it in a timely manner, you'll be able to save money by having your video engineers help work on it. Uh, I, one last thing I wanted to mention is that this funding is this peg funding, that's exactly what this is supposed to be used for. This money is specifically supposed to be for capital investment and I would really appreciate it if you guys approved it. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Next we have Sam R., followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Chow. I would strongly recommend approving this item. Uh, this is the kind of item that is critical infrastructure for the city. The city should be prioritizing items like this. I agree with Jean Bedore, this should have stayed on consent calendar and should have just been approved. All questions are answered in the reports. This is an item that is paid for and let's not, let's not, uh, spend our time on analysis, paralysis on projects that are critical to the city. Uh, what we should be cutting and we should be cutting deeply are projects that are consultant studies in other areas such as go-to-air projects and bike lanes. So let's not, please, cut infrastructure projects like this, please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And next we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda. You'll need to unmute mode, Rhoda. I see you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Uh, mayor, that's our, Rhoda is our final speaker, but she may be experiencing some audio issues.
Okay, that's fine.
Audio? How about now?
We do hear you, yes.
Yay, okay, I just re-plugged in my, uh, and anyway, didn't recognize, so I'm here. Hi, um, I did, I did, uh, write on this. I do see that this is on the, um, P E G funds, which is good. Um, however, I am a little concerned about the potential of maybe overreaching on the peg funds and possibly running out of, running out of those funds later on. Um, so it seemed like some of the things that were on there seemed to be excessive, particularly, you know, when I was reading, I mean, I would say, and I wrote to you about this, we, we need functional vetted videos. I don't think we need advance, quote, advanced video systems technology ensuring high-quality video production. Um, so hoping that we can take a, you know, just a really close look at this stuff so we don't get caught needing these peg funds somewhere else. Thanks.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item.
Thank you. So Terry, can you ask, answer some of Peggy's questions?
Hello? So peg funds can only be used for, uh, broadcasting, uh, to city channels, so that's, uh, broadcasting city council meetings. So it cannot be used for upgrading, um, the E O C or Quinlan Community Center. Downtime, thank you. So the new control room will be built actually in this facility and the old control room, as Peggy mentioned, is in city hall. So that'll stay functional until the new control room is ready to go live. And so at that time, we'll switch over. We plan to do that during the month of August when council is, is, is at recess. So we, we are looking to minimize any downtime. The A V upgrades and lighting upgrades in this room will happen outside of meeting, scheduled, uh, meeting times. So the, the plan is to, to not interrupt live meetings.
Great, so there, so the transition will be this August or next August?
August twenty-five.
So this year, that's why it's important to approve it now, so we can make that. Okay, thank you, that's good. Any other questions from council members? No, um, then let's move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Okay, so we don't have time for item eight, so do we, do I, do we need to vote to continue this to the next meeting or it will?
We'll continue to the February fourth meeting by rule.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then this meeting is adjourned.